Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to call to order this meeting, this regular session of the Bloomington City Council for Wednesday, April 17th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff? I'm going to move on until you can get that going. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
And Councilmember Ruff? You're up and going.
Councilmember Ruff, you're muted.
No, we cannot.
Maybe check your speaker settings on Zoom and see which speaker might be selected on your system.
All right, I think we can see that Councilmember Ruff is here via Zoom, and we will try to fix the audio. Thank you, Clerk Bolden.
House tour.
Yes, we'll get a tour of his accommodations there. All right, I'd like to start with the land and labor acknowledgement, but I need to get it out first. I still don't have it memorized. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. So to summarize this evening's agenda, first we have approval of four sets of minutes, then we will move to reports. First, reports from council members. Then, the next part of the agenda is reports from the mayor and city offices, although I don't believe we have any. Reports from council committees, I don't believe we have any of those either. Then comes the first period of public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. And then we have two items of legislation for second readings and resolutions. First, the return of Resolution 2024-04, a resolution opposing the Leap Pipeline Water Diversion Project, which was passed 504 on March 27th and vetoed by the mayor. Then we have Ordinance 2024-07 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 138.51-acre property from planned unit development and residential medium lot to planned unit development, and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding South Wiemer Road Sudbury Partners LLC are the petitioners. And then we don't have any items for first readings, so we would then move to additional public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We will review the council's schedule, and then we will adjourn. So we move to approval of minutes.
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
Thank you, and this is necessary because two sets of minutes occurred prior to this council term and the term of the Clerk. And we do need to do a roll call vote on all items tonight if we have a member via Zoom, which we did have a few minutes ago. Council Attorney Lucas, do we have Councilmember Ruff on Zoom?
Looks like he's in the meeting. I'm not sure if he's able to turn on his video or try his audio again.
All right, well, let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion to suspend the rules. Clerk Bolden?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
I'm going to skip Councilmember Ruff. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And any sign of Councilmember Ruff? Okay.
I move that the minutes from September 24th, 2003, October 15th, 2003, November 15th, 2023, and December 6th, 2023 be approved.
It's been moved and seconded, and note that November 15th of '23 and December 6th of '23 had just a couple of minor corrections that were sent out earlier today. Any questions or comments on those minutes? All right, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll again?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes. Thank you.
No sign of Councilmember Ruff. Okay. All right, those minutes are adopted or approved. Next, we'll move on to reports from council members, and I'll start on my left. Councilmember Daley, do you have a report this evening?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I've got something. Sorry, I'm just pulling it up. Okay. I, so, I know we're looking at the schedule, that session, special session, or our work session around public comment, and I am very excited about that. So I just wanted to get a little ahead of that and talk a little bit about participatory politics and housing. So there's this book called The Neighborhood Defenders that is about that, participatory politics and America's housing crisis. I didn't read the book, but I listened to a podcast on it. If anyone wants that, I can dig it up because it's been a while. But, I mean, mostly what I think is public comment is such a tricky situation, right? Like, being as accessible as possible, being predictable, which is very hard, and letting everyone speak who comes. There's just so much that we have to think about and consider when we are probably looking at changing how we do business up here. I mean, I think for the better, right? But it's just, it's such a complicated process. So one thing that some other cities do is track demographics of who comes and comments, just to be like, who are we hearing from and who are we not hearing from? And this book is a little bit about that. So I'm just going to read a paragraph about the summary of this book. In this book, we show how neighborhood participation in the housing permitting process exasperates existing political inequalities, limits the housing supply, and contributes to the current and affordable housing crisis. Participatory institutions like planning and zoning boards invite comments from neighbors on proposed housing developments. While neighbors with all viewpoints are welcome, we show that the individuals who choose to participate hold overwhelmingly negative views of new housing, far more negative than their broader communities, and are socio-economically advantaged on a variety of dimensions. Using land use institutions, these individuals, who we term neighborhood defenders, are able to raise concerns that lead to lengthy delays, high development costs, and smaller projects. The result is a diminished housing stock and higher housing costs. It's just one of the interesting things, right, about when we look at who can or gets to come to our meetings and how, I mean, I know so many council members up here are holding meetings in different places, right? Like the mayor hall meeting on a bus. And it really is just about looking at how we get more folks involved and be as equitable as possible, and always keep in mind, too, that a lot of people can't comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Yes, just a really quick announcement, again, reminding everyone that on Saturday, the 27th of April, we're holding a joint, need to think of a better name, but a joint government town hall that's going to be attended and hosted by myself, Mayor Thompson, Councilmember Crossley, County Councilmember Crossley, and Shelley Yoder. It's going to be in the auditorium of the Monroe County Library downtown from 10:30 to noon. So everyone is invited, bring a friend, or AD if you can.
Thank you. Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes, I do have just a couple of announcements, and they're both actually about this Saturday, April 20th. So the first thing is I will be having my monthly constituent meeting on Saturday, the Saturday, April 20th, at 11:00 a.m., next door in the McCloskey Room. My constituent meetings at this point are all in person, so please come on down and say hello. That would be wonderful. And then my second announcement is just about Earth Day. It's April, so it's Earth Day month, and Earth Day is actually on Monday, the 22nd, and the city Earth Day event is also on Saturday, the 20th, in Switchyard Park in the afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00. So please consider attending that event. And if you can't attend the event, just in terms of honoring the sentiment behind Earth Day, think about different things that you can do to lower your carbon footprint, to save some energy, make a different choice sometimes, walk or bike, carpool, trip chain, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that is all, and I hope that you think about those things, and I hope to see you on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, sorry, I have a couple of things. One, just a reminder that next Thursday, April 25th, Councilmember Daley and I will be co-hosting a grieving session for anyone who was impacted by things that were said on our council meeting on April 3rd, followed by a kind of activist brainstorming session on how we, as legislators, can best support our community and changes that we can make that the most people would be comfortable with. We don't have a venue yet, we're still looking, so please, for anyone who's interested, please reach out to us. So that's one thing, we'd love to have you. Again, that's 5:00 to 7:00 next Thursday, April 25th. The second thing is, we received a poem from Antonia Matthew, who annually comes and reads us a poem for National Poetry Month, but she was unable to make it this year, and so she sent us the poem, and I wanted to read it. It's very short, it's called "Watermelons." So, "Great green Buddhas on the fruit stand, we eat the smile and spit out the teeth." So that is the poem, thank you. And a third of happy little five-week, y'all, please stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Two things. One is, Councilmember Ruff and I have our monthly constituent meeting this Saturday, April 20th, at 10:00 a.m., and you can find the link at bloomington.in.gov/council. Second thing I want to say is reflecting on what happened in the news, a lot's been going on, but I thought I'd bring up something that's very important to everyone. Reflecting back to the surveilling of the American public back about 20 years ago by the Bush administration, the Bush-Cheney administration, it was discovered in 2004 that they had been, in direct violation of the Constitution, been spying on American citizens without a warrant. And this was in violation of the Constitution and the FISA law of 1978, which is the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act. This was a really big deal back then. In fact, it recalls for the impeachment of President Bush at the time. Sadly, this spying was legalized in 2008, retroactively by the Congress, and this was the FISA Amendment Act, and it's since been renewed in 2012 and 2018. It's up for renewal now, and it passed the House last week, if you noticed. It was not only approved, but an amendment to remove, to add a warrant, was defeated in a split vote with Mike Johnson, the leader of the House, actually, who's self-proclaimed civil libertarian, voting against the warrant. So it was a 212 split vote, and it failed. And then furthermore, it was actually expanded such that it requires cable companies now to assist the government in spying. So to quote, well, let me just move on and tell you that it moves now to the Senate. So it has to be approved by the Senate, so I'm just alerting everyone that's listening to contact Todd Young and Mike Braun, our senators, state senators, if this is something that is important to you. I think it's essential to either defeat the FISA 702 bill, which is the Surveillance Act, or amend it to require a warrant, as required by the Constitution, and remove the forceful cooperation of, in quotations of Ron Wyden, Senator, "any other service provider who has access to equipment that is being or may be used to transmit or store wire or electronic communications." That's directly from the bill. This is very broad. In other words, it means anyone with a server, a wire, a cable box, Wi-Fi router, phone, computer, anything can be surveilled. So just to say that the Spotted Governments have always used unchecked surveillance of their citizens as a step toward totalitarianism. I think we can protect American civil liberties, or we can protect Americans and protect our civil liberties. This is a massive step toward a surveillance state, and I think we should oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a report this evening?
I do not. Can you hear me, though?
Yes, we can. Very good.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the confusion earlier, I just couldn't get the mic to work.
All right, well, I'm glad it's working now.
... to show us his grandchild. No. (laughter)
I don't think that's pertinent at this point, but I understand the sentiment. So I wanted to just give a brief report. I'm wearing this T-shirt for the Hoosier Hills Food Bank for their Hunger Action Heroes. I attended their annual meeting and Hunger Action Heroes Award Ceremony last Friday. Hoosier Hills Food Bank, of course, is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the elimination of hunger in south-central Indiana. It covers a six-county area. And last year, they distributed 5,252,683 pounds of food, and about half of that was in Monroe County. So it's a great organization, it's been around a long time, and they rely on volunteers, and they also rely on volunteer-run, smaller agencies, food pantries, community kitchens, and such in the six counties to do the actual distribution to residents and households that need food. And so I just want to give them a shout-out, an excellent organization and great volunteers and staff that really have helped our community, especially through COVID, but for a long time since, before that as well. And just to reflect on what Councilmember Rallo said, I was actually part of what was called the Bill of Rights Defense Committee. There were committees like this throughout the United States in 2002, 2003. It was a nonpartisan group of concerned residents, I was not on the council at the time, that was speaking out against the surveillance mechanisms in the Patriot Act, which were subsequently, as Councilmember Rallo said, enshrined in federal law and actually made worse. So I share his concerns on that matter. And then the third thing I wanted to just mention is that graduate workers at Indiana University are on strike. And we, in April of 2022, two years ago, Councilmember Flaherty and I sponsored Resolution 22-10 in support of the Indiana Graduate Workers Coalition/United Electrical Workers, because that's the overall umbrella union that they're working with. And so I wanted to just say I, again, support the graduate workers. They have a vote, they've been collecting union cards, they did it two years ago, and they did a new push this academic year, and they have 52% of graduate workers who have signed union cards. And in any other private industry, you only need 30% before you get a union vote. Indiana University, since it's in the public sector, doesn't benefit from the enforcement mechanisms of the National Labor Relations Board to require a vote, but it's the right thing to do. And so I call on the IU administration to allow a vote on unionization of graduate workers. All right, we will move on to, I think we can go ahead and go to public comment, we don't have any mayoral reports tonight that were scheduled. So this is the first opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening. So I see we already have a taker here in council chambers. We have a maximum of 20 minutes for this period, so how many people would like to speak here in council chambers? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
If there are folks on Zoom that would like to comment, please let us know by raising your hand. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar by clicking on the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate that, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. See one hand at the moment.
All right, well, let's do a maximum of three minutes each, and start here in council chambers. Go ahead, please.
My name's Siti Kanarni, and the last couple of decades, I've had the privilege to honor working with many of the wonderful local businesses as their banker. I've helped them through their struggles, celebrated successes, but over the last four years, local businesses, who are the foundation of our community, have faced unprecedented challenges when dealing with the prospect of shutting down their business due to global pandemic, to then facing staffing shortages and supply chain issues, and all while trying to recover from the pandemic. And if that wasn't enough, now they're facing, you know, dealing with record inflation. The convention center expansion project has been one of the lights at the end of the tunnel for local businesses, in my opinion, and this project represents a significant economic investment in our community, helping to enhance one of our major economic drivers, which is tourism. The business community is excited for this project to begin, and I just want to, I would like to thank each of you for your efforts and leadership in making the Munchfield Convention Center expansion a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker here in chambers? Oh, I'm sorry, did you sign in? We do, okay. I want to remind everybody to please sign in.
Madam President, I'm getting messages from the folks on Zoom that were not picking up the audio, so just wanted to make folks in the room aware, I'll try to work with cats to get that sorted out, but folks on Zoom aren't able to hear our speakers at the moment.
Okay, please speak as closely to the mic as you can. Go ahead.
All right, let's try to fix that first. There we go.
All right, my name is Galen Cassidy, I'm with Uptown Cafe, and I apologize for my outfit, I just came from coaching soccer. So anyways, as a business owner downtown in the Bloomington Entertainment and Arts District, I also wanted to second what was just said about the project that is coming to light and fruition thanks to you and many others in the community with the convention centers. So, you know, we're getting ready and preparing for a little five-weekend graduation weekend shortly after that. A lot of the downtown restaurants, bars are all really staffing up and trying to do as best we can on those weekends because everyone knows, being a business in Bloomington in the summer, it takes a dip. And the thought of expanding a convention center, entertaining larger groups, bringing more people here on the summers during the weekdays when, you know, IU's in session, it would really help us, and I just wanted to reiterate how important that project would be. As a restaurant and bar, you know, we were the vehicles for this tax, the food and beverage tax, we were the ones that collected it. And we had to get that feedback early on when this was enacted about what it was for, and all that was worked out back then. So, you know, everyone really bought in early on, and as we've gotten feedback and seeing this convention center starting to move along, we're really excited about this. And so I just wanted to be here tonight to thank you for that and thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker, and please be sure to sign in.
I'll sign in real quick. All right. My name is Jordan Davis, I'm the Director of Operations at The Chocolate Moose, I also put on Food Truck Friday, do a podcast that highlights the local restaurant industry. I honestly kind of like, I've been here for 15 years, I'm extremely proud of what we have to offer here in Bloomington and the potential that we hold as a community. I honestly find it very disheartening that I feel like I had to be here today, but I feel like it's necessary to show my support for a project that's already had so many setbacks, and I was beginning to come hopeful that it had a fairly clear path ahead. I think it's very important for our community to trust our local government, and I could think of very few things that would undermine your constituents' trust in you, more than using the money that has been collected solely for one purpose, for anything other than its intended use, expanding the convention center. Please allow the CIB to complete the task they've been set out to do in a timely manner. As I'm sure you're well aware, every month that we're waiting is costing $160,000. We don't have time to waste. We're the second-most-desirable convention market in the state, the demand is there, it's a supplier's market right now for conventions, and we're primed to capitalize on it. My company, and many others in town, have happily gone along with the food and beverage tax, knowing that it would lead to a brighter future for the city that we love so much. Please don't turn your back on us, we just want to see it happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Let's take a comment from Zoom before we go on here in chambers. Mr. Lucas?
First on Zoom is Mike Fox.
Okay, Mr. Fox, you'll have three minutes, please state your full name and go ahead.
Great, thanks. Yeah, my name's Michael Fox, I'm the owner at Lenny's Restaurant. And I'll be brief, I'd really just like to go on record that as a downtown business owner and a restaurant owner, that I support the expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center. Well, I never particularly supported the tax, I've always been in support of expanding the convention center, and now the tax has been collected for five, four, five years now. I think, yeah, we should finish what we started and expand the convention center. We're, you know, we're located on Kirkwood, very tourism-driven, and the thought of being able to bring, like, midweek, early week-type, larger conventions to Bloomington would be a huge support for our business and all the people that work here. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next person here in chambers?
Hi, my name is Bob Costello. I own Soma Coffee House, Village Deli, and The Ivy, which is a catering and event center on North Walnut. That wasn't a plug, I just wanted to make sure you knew what it was. I've been called here tonight unexpectedly, so I'm not as prepared for my remarks, but what I'd like to say is Bloomington's a jewel, and that jewel needs to be buffed and shined. And part of the convention center is that it draws people to our community, and sometimes it's their first exposure to our community. That community, that exposure often leads to investment, investment in the future of Bloomington through employment, through bringing other conventions here, which leads to tax revenue for the city and for the county, because people that come to the conventions often spend money, not only on that first time that they visit the city, but on the time that they come back with their family, because they realize that, something that we all know, that this is one of the best cities in Indiana. And that money that we've been collecting over the last years, there were quite a few of us that didn't agree with with the food and beverage tax. But I will say that you've been very prudent with it. You've helped the restaurant industry during COVID with it. You offered loans, which I hope are getting paid back. And I'd like to say that it's really important that we stick with the commitment that we made, and it may have not been what you made years ago, but there have been many people involved in this. And the South Side of Bloomington has been waiting for this. There has been a lot of, I wouldn't say blight, but it looks like it's ready for a shovel to go in the ground. And it's looked that way for a long time. I'm really encouraged by the progress that the county and the city has made in working together. And I hope that you can go forward with that progress and that collaboration to build what we've all been waiting for. And I don't want to say promise, because I realize as time goes on that you may want to rethink things, and there's nothing wrong with that. But I'm here to support it. And you can see Galen takes time out of his day. I've never seen Galen in casual clothes, ever. So I think you all know that we think this is really important, and not just from a restaurant owner's point of view, but also from a citizen's point of view. My daughter got married. There's really not a venue in town that can hold a really large wedding. There are many charity functions that are held at the convention center that could raise more money for the community if they had a larger space. So there's much more benefit to this than just bringing in outside corporations for their events. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your effort. And I love the clock. Keep it up. Maybe turn it to yourselves occasionally.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm Ron Stanhouse with Crazy Horse, Upstairs Pub, and Alley Bar, all on Kirkwood Avenue. I'm sorry, I'm signing in while we do this. Hope you don't have to read it. Few notes. I've been in the business for over 40 years. So I'm almost older than anybody in the restaurant business, but Galen's father probably predates me. So we want to thank, you know, all the visionary leadership that this city has provided over the years. It's led to this. And I'm so excited, you know, that we're on the verge of actually seeing this vision, you know, in action. We get to see it actually happen. You know, our restaurants have watched Bloomington grow and develop over those 40 years. And there wasn't a lot to Bloomington back when I was a freshman at IU. It's changed a lot, and you'll just have to take our word for that. I am past president of the Bloomington Independent Restaurant Association and co-director for Taste of Bloomington. And over those years, you know, we work closely with dozens of restaurant owners, particularly the local restaurant owners, who generally share the same problems and concerns. We've all got so much in common. We appreciate that after a long COVID break, you know, as we kind of stopped our activity and our fee collection, you know, the convention center expansion is finally back on track. So while the expansion documents were signed in 2017, you know, there was so much work before that. And, you know, that's where all this, maybe it's not appreciated. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of youth in front of me here, but, you know, there's so much work that's been done, so much foundation's been laid. And I just want to express, you know, my concern that that doesn't get respected, you know. The local restaurants, you know, are looking for fulfilling, you know, the expansion promise. And that's what was sold to us, you know, as Jordan expressed, Bob expressed, Galen expressed, you know, we're all on the same page here. The restaurants are all on the same page, and that's my point. All right? We're looking for the economic growth of an expanded convention center. That's pretty obvious, I think, after a few speakers. So we want to thank you for your progress, you know, the recent inter-local, the budgets. We're getting closer and closer. You know, I'm looking for someone to seal the deal, move this forward. Oh, we're at zero. Let's kick it into high gear. Let's drive this economic development. Thank you.
Let's go to another speaker on Zoom if we have one.
Just one written comment from Sam Dove that he has asked me to read. Mr. Dove says the City of Bloomington will be hosting the Second Annual Bike to Earth Day event at Switchyard Park on Saturday, April 20, 2024, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. The event is free and open to the public and will feature live music, food and drinks, local vendors, raffles, tree giveaways, and more. This year's event is hosted as a joint effort between the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development, Go Bloomington, and the Parks and Recreation Department. Registration is not required. For more information, visit bloomington.in.gov/sustainability/earthday. Event activities include climate change education. Throughout the day, the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development will host informational discussions on how residents can consider climate action, with two featured discussions on climate change and health, and going green with battery-powered lawn equipment, Eco Heroes art competition, vote on your favorite art pieces from the Environmental Commission's Eco Heroes Art Competition. And that is the comment.
Thank you. Next speaker here in chambers?
All right, thanks. I'm Matt Seddon, and I'm here speaking as the President of Downtown Bloomington, Inc., at this time. And I also want to speak in favor of moving the convention center project forward, and even specifically the general area where it is being sort of planned and looked at. And one of the things that I love about Bloomington is the commitment of just about everybody I speak with and meet to having a vibrant and enjoyable place, not just a place where you can make money, but a vibrant place with a high quality of life. And all the other speakers have spoken to the economic benefits of the convention center expansion. What I want to talk about is two things that I think are also associated with it, and that is hospitality and joy. And, you know, we all love being hospitable, and we love receiving good hospitality. And when you go to another city and you go to a convention or a conference at their convention center, that's a major aspect of how you judge that city and how you judge their hospitality. And being hospitable is also joyful. You know, being, receiving good hospitality is joyful. And I think a key thing about the project is where it is located, so close to our square, but not right on top of it, provides a great opportunity for people to be able to experience the city, be welcomed into the city, still have a great facility to conduct their business. But they, you know, it's easy to partake of the wonderful square and downtown area that we have. And I would anticipate all the other things that would grow up around it. So it really would say welcome. We want you close with us, to our center. We want you to be with us. We want to see you. That's hospitality. That brings joy. I would also say that just living here, and when I've been around the existing convention center or downtown and there's a big convention, I just love seeing people from out of town coming around and visiting and enjoying it. And they've all got the little name tags. And, you know, I try not to be too obvious about figuring out what the conference is, you know, the second convention of the wiring experts of whatever. And it's, but it's great. And it brings me joy. I think it brings other people joy. And this, an expansion and the location will just enable us to have so many more people here, offer so much more hospitality, and bring so much more joy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have time for one more speaker.
Howdy. I'm Mike Klingy. I own the Orbit Room. I just came and talked here just two weeks ago, so you might remember me. And I was talking about Parklets last time. And if you guessed it, I'm here to give my support for the expansion of the convention center. Orbit Room opened in 2018, so we've never known life without a food or beverage tax. But honestly, the 1% doesn't seem like a lot when we knew that it was going to expand a convention center to also help drive business to the downtown area, which could be very needed, especially on Sundays through Thursdays. I don't know if everyone that is watching the Zoom or follows this is intently, but the convention center can't even currently really do a convention of even 500 people over a weekend. It's not like we need to have a 5,000-person convention center or anything like that, just an updated one that's not from like the 1980s, that we can do different things than just the traditional things that a convention center does. I also think sometimes the point is missed, too, because I believe some of the plans was to maybe relocate the visitor center with the convention center in a centrally-located downtown area, which would also kind of make the downtown area make a little more sense with, if you have the visitor center here, you have the convention center, this is all this area downtown, which also might help cull the traffic a little bit of speeding, because there would be more activity in that area. And perhaps we could get it a little more pedestrian-friendly there as well. There's a great visitor center in Knoxville, Tennessee. At least once a week, they do a live concert from their visitor center that is broadcast onto the community radio station. The entire place fills up with community members watching these amazing touring bands playing. There's just one kind of idea of what could happen in a visitor center that's also in the convention center. Everyone else has made so many great points about it. I don't want to go on too long, other than that I'm so happy to hear this is happening and moving forward. But also, it's been six years, and you've collected a lot of money for this one purpose. And so let's work together and get it done. We, yeah. I would love to be here to see the convention center open. If we don't create more business in the downtown area, we might not be there to enjoy it, which I know several friends that also gave the 1% tax through the years that the restaurants were open that are no longer here. So let's get it done. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're technically at the end of our 20 minutes, but if there's no objection, I'll let the last speaker go. Go ahead.
I thought I would get at least one objection. And well-earned. I'm always thrown by Reverend Matt, because it's a little bait and switch when he shows up in a suit. I am the face or the employee of the food and beverage tax.
How could you state your name?
Sorry, Susana Quilla, owner of Bloomington Bagel Company. And I also serve as the Trades Advisory District Board with Heat Sock. I've been employee of the food and beverage tax. I'm the person that hires an accountant to make sure that we're collecting the taxes properly. I'm the person that explains to the public where that money goes. And I've been very proud of that and very supportive of that. One of the problems that we have noticed is IU conferences can't hold conferences. So they hire us to help when they have conferences, but they can only do it when the students aren't here. They don't have enough space on campus for classrooms. And they lament constantly that we cannot hold conferences because there's no space. And we have a facility that's so small, 24,000 square feet, one of the smallest convention centers in the area, that can't even hold a beer event that everybody in the community wants to go to, that we now have to push to be hosted outside of town. We are missing the community building. We have Cook, we have Sumatra Biopharma, formerly Baxter. Now we have Nova Nordisk, who increased the GDP of Norway incredibly in our town. They can't bring people here for meetings. We are really, with 69 now, a suburb of Indianapolis. Takes 45 minutes to get there. When I go to Austin, Texas for conferences, I can't get halfway across town in 45 minutes. We are a jewel in the Midwest. We can be a jewel for tech. We can be a jewel for our university. We can be a jewel for the arts. But we have to give people an opportunity and a place to gather. And as a result, businesses like mine, all kinds of businesses in this town will benefit. A bait and switch won't allow us to benefit. It'll just have a community that's upset and disappointed after this six-year commitment. So I really hope that you consider and support this project. You have our support and our thanks.
Thank you. So that concludes the public comment period for this part of the meeting. We will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Daley.
Thank you. I move to appoint for the Commission of the Status of Women, Patty Moon, to seat C3. And for the Traffic Commission, to appoint Brian Warner, to seat C1.
Second.
Those appointments have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers?
Can we do this at the same time as Committee C?
I think we probably could. Does Team C have an appointment they would like to add to the list?
Yes. On behalf of Interview Committee C, I move to appoint Stephen Volin to seat C1 of the Parking Commission, and Jackson Murphy to seat C5 also for the Parking Commission.
Second.
All right. It's, those two additional appointments have been moved and seconded. Now, are there any questions or comments? Thank you. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Ruff?
You're muted. Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those appointments have been approved. And we thank the members of the public who are willing to give their time in this volunteer capacity for the benefit of the community. Next, we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move that Resolution 2024-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. And note that this is a second vote on this resolution that was vetoed due to inaction by the mayor's, by the mayor. And Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2024-04, a resolution opposing the Leap Pipeline Water Diversion Project. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Ruff. It expresses the common council's opposition to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation's proposed limitless exploration, advanced pace innovation district project that would divert water from the Wabash River aquifer and/or Taze River aquifer, which may impact Hoosiers who rely on these aquifers for their water supply. This resolution also directs the city clerk to send copies of the resolution to the Indiana General Assembly, Indiana Economic Development Corporation, the Indiana Finance Authority, the Indiana Secretary of Commerce, and Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2024-04 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And if there's no objection, I would like to limit our consideration of this matter to about 30 minutes. We will first have a presentation, a brief presentation by the sponsors, then a period of council questions, if there are any, and then we will have a period of council comments or debate. I do not feel the need to go to the public for this item since we did that previously. So unless there's any objection, we will move ahead in that manner?
I might ask that we make it even shorter than that, if it's possible. I don't know what a formal motion would be to do that.
There was no formal motion. You can, you can make a motion to limit the time spent on this item?
I'd motion that we limit council, that we limit presentation to two minutes, council comment to one minute, and that we do have time for public comment.
Council comment one minute each, you mean?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. Do we have a second for that motion?
All right, let's just move ahead. I don't think we'll actually need 30 minutes. That
was just kind of a maximum. So I will turn it over to was just kind of a maximum. So I will turn it over to Councilmembers Rallo and Ruff to briefly remind us what this ordinance, uh, resolution is about.
Shall I start?
Go ahead, Councilmember Ruff.
Well, what, first thing I want to do is remind us what it's not about. It is not a resolution against the IEDC. It's about our concern over potentially precedent-setting, risky, and environmentally harmful proposal to divert a huge amount of water from the groundwater supply for communities across a wide swath of the state that is precedent-setting in a way that could certainly, and will likely affect Bloomington directly in the near future, given our dependence on Lake Monroe, and it's a potential to be tapped in a similar way. And, you know, part of resolution, resolutions like this in Bloomington are the official, sanctioned way and strongest tool we have as a council to make a collective statement about an important issue. Back to the IEDC issue, communities up and down the Wabash have passed resolutions very much like this one. And they are all, most of those communities are actively engaged with the IEDC through large grants, ready grants, other economic development proposal, uh, programs, and things are fine. The arguments have been made in the past meetings. You've, we've heard from Kevin, uh, Kerwin Olson of the Citizens Action Coalition. You know that cities up and down, cities and counties up and down that swath of the state have, have passed them. I want to add that I've also spoken to our council rep, I mean, our state representative, Matt Pierce, for Bloomington, who is in full agreement that this is an issue that directly impacts and affects Bloomington. It's a very important issue that we should be concerned about. And with that, Councilmember Rallo, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I have a few remarks. Okay. Thank you. So much is asked about why, why is this a concern of Bloomington? Number one, Indiana taxpayers are footing the bill for this. Number two, according to the Citizen Action Coalition, which is the preeminent public interest advocacy group in the state, whose director and researcher, Kerwin Olson, and Grant Smith respectively, were here last time, the CAC explains in their report that ratepayers will likely be on the hook for anticipated expenses. Because low-income Hoosiers are the least capable of affording rate increases, it will disproportionately affect those residents. That's why it's a concern of ours, too. Number three, as Councilmember Ruff said, it's likely just a matter of time before we are affected ourselves, most likely directly by having our own water tapped, Lake Monroe. This project sets a precedent for that. And it would also be wonderful for us to have the support from the 20 or so municipalities that, like us, have offered resolutions against this pipeline. My last thing I want to say is Earth Day is coming up. We're concerned about climate change. Much is made of that. Water pumping accounts for between 10 to 25% of global energy use. It's hugely energy-intensive. That's because water's heavy. It's over eight pounds per gallon. So do the math. If this is arithmetic, if that's 100 million gallons per day, that's 800 million pounds of water to transport 52 miles from Tippecanoe County to Lebanon. Now, for municipalities like ours, water accounts for 30 to 60% of energy use. Bloomington peak demand is about 24 million gallons per day, so about a quarter of the 100 million that this pipeline could carry. So if Leap uses 100 million gallons per day, that's four times the total use for 145,000 people that Lake Monroe currently serves. Four times 145, it's almost 600,000 people. Furthermore, water from Lake Monroe is pumped 10 to 11 miles compared to the Leap Pipeline of 52 miles. That's four times the amount of water for five times the distance. And it's also twice the elevation that the water has to go. So simple math says that this Leap Pipeline could easily account for a carbon footprint seven times our municipal city carbon footprint. Seven times. So if you want to vote for the climate, if you want to vote for sustainability, here's your chance. This resolution does that. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to questions. Are there any questions for the sponsors? Seeing none, we will move on to comments from councilmembers who would like to comment on this resolution.
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Ruff?
Well, I hope my colleagues who abstained on the last vote on this resolution had the opportunity to reflect further on the importance and relevance of this resolution to Bloomington for now and in the future, and that upon further careful thought and consideration, my colleagues who abstained before now feel that the issue and the resolution rise to the threshold level of deserving their yes vote, and that they will join the existing council majority who voted yes on it last time, and vote yes this, vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? All right. If not, I will ask Clerk Bolden to call the roll on Resolution 2024-04.
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Abstain.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes. So that passes with a vote of 7-0-1, which would override the veto of the mayor. All right. So now we will move on to, uh, Ordinance 2024-07.
Thank you. Before this is read, we've discussed, uh, following a specific procedure that might be a little different than we've done. So I'm going to move that the common council adopt the following procedure for consideration of Ordinance 2024-07 this evening. And that procedure is outlined in the meeting memo. If anybody wants to follow along, I do have a slight change. The first thing that I want to say about it, well, should I just read as it's exactly written in the memo?
No, make the motion.
Okay. Okay. So first off, I want to make clear to the public and all of us that we do intend to have a third reading on this. Typically, we have a first reading where we do not discuss it, and then at a second reading, there is a discussion and often a vote, usually a vote. And because this project is so big, we kind of want to say upfront that we will have a third reading on it, so then we will not vote on this tonight. And that third reading will be held on May 1st, 2024, which is our next council meeting. And then the second piece of the motion is to limit the overall time limit for staff presentation and petitioner statement to 90 minutes total, and then limit common council questions for each member to have four minutes for question and answer period, and then public comment to have three minutes per speaker.
Can I just clarify, and I apologize, I didn't think of this earlier. The public comment, would that be followed by councilmember comment? And if so, would you like to limit that?
Uh, yes, that would be my intention, to have councilmember questions and then public comment. And then usually, we would have councilmember comment after that. But my motion has no councilmember comment after that, because we will then again discuss this in two weeks on May 1st.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And, and I, I did not have a cap on public comment. I figure that anybody who wants to speak, they, you know, speak for three minutes per speaker for everybody who wants to speak on this topic this evening. And also to clarify that there is intention at the next hearing to also have a period of public comments as well.
All right. Any questions on the motion? Or comments? All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll on the motion to structure debate.
Yes, Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Stasburg?
Yes.
All right. Now we can go ahead and introduce the item.
Yes. So now I would move that Ordinance 2024-07 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right. That's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
She stepped away.
Oh, I completely missed that. Sorry, y'all. Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes 7-0. Could the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-07, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 138.51-acre property from plan unit development and residential medium lot to plan unit development, and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding South Weimar Road, Sudbury Partners LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2024-07 would rezone 138.51-acre property from plan unit development and residential medium lot to a plan unit development, and approve a PUD district ordinance and preliminary plan.
I move that Ordinance 2024-07 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And I believe we have Development Services Director Jackie Scanlon here to present the ordinance to us.
I'm the Jackie Scanlon. Development Services Manager. Let me get this set for you. Okay. Can I make that small? Steven, is that okay? All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Oh, sorry. I think it's at the end. Just a sec. Okay. So tonight, we are looking at what was seen at the Plan Commission as petition PUD 1823. And as stated by the clerk, the petition is a request for rezoning approximately 140 acres to plan unit development, which involves a request for approval of district ordinance and preliminary plan as well. So you can see the property is located here on the southwest side of town. It is the remaining portion of the partially-developed 1999 Sudbury PUD. The property is bordered on Weimar Road to the west, is currently the only direct vehicular access off of Sudbury that comes off of Weimar. So the basic site information, again, is the property is 138.51 acres. It is currently zoned largely PUD because the most of it is part of the previous Sudbury PUD. There's a small portion out by Weimar that is zoned residential medium lot that would be rezoned, which is probably just a mapping error. And the comprehensive plan designation is neighborhood residential, but this property is also in a focus area in the comprehensive plan. And the property is currently undeveloped. So you probably all already know this, but just to go over what we're doing, when we are rezoning a property through the process of plan unit development, you are amending the zoning map to change the zoning district for that location to PUD. In this case, it's a little strange because it's already zoned PUD, but this will be a different PUD with its own district ordinance, which is the set of rules in the plan unit development, and its own preliminary plan, which is the guiding document for how planning will go forward as the area develops. So the proposal tonight for the new PUD is for five neighborhoods, and you can see those here, and I think that they are in image one in your packet. Five neighborhoods, new rights-of-way to be developed, some from the transportation plan and some more local roads. The petitioner is proposing 4,250 dwelling units, and for the property to be built out over the next 10 years. A couple of the features of the site are land to be dedicated for trail, uh, trailhead, for a trail that would be coming through the Duke easement from the east, and as well as dedicated land for a fire station immediately adjacent to the trailhead. Additionally, you can see here, there, the green represents areas that are particularly environmentally constrained. So there are a number of environmental protections that are put in place through the plan unit development as well. And then some commercial, while the planning development is largely residential, there are some commercial uses planned. So this is the latest kind of schematic that we've seen. Oops. Hold on. Just a sec. And so this is not, you are not approving a site plan. You are not approving the layout of these buildings. This is a guide that the developer uses for themselves, where each of these kind of building outlines represents a certain density, a certain number of units, and for them to try to figure out how many units they can get on the property within the roadways that we've discussed and with the environmental constraints. And so this is a general idea of how they think the property could build out to achieve the 4,250 dwelling units. So this property, immediately to the east of this property, is, uh, is parkland owned by the city, zoned parks and open space, as well as the county parcel that is part of the Thompson PUD. And then Arbor Ridge is to the northwest of the property, which was part of the larger originals PUD, and some of the original PUD has been developed to the south as well, and the original farmhouse to the southwest. Okay. So let's look at the petition and what they're requesting to do. So as I mentioned before, five, what they're calling neighborhoods or development areas, are planned to be developed, and you can see the rough outline here. Each area is expected to be delivered separately, and that is an image two of your packet. Again, they are expecting to develop the property over the course of the next 10 years. So you can see the five neighborhoods listed here with their approximate sizes and when they should be developed. The Everest Center is the center of the development and is the largest and most dense and obviously most units predicted for that area of the five neighborhoods. Okay. So part of what they will have to do for this property in order to develop it is subdivide it. So first, they will likely split it into the five neighborhoods, but eventually, obviously, they'll have to create tiny lots for each of the properties that, as they go to develop. So you can see an example to the northwest or the upper left of the kind of olive-green line. That's Arbor Ridge, and each of the houses are on their own lot. So eventually, the rest of this PUD will also be subdivided. And part of the requirement for subdivision is that you have to plat and build those roads that are in the transportation plan. So you can see here, we have two main roads that are in the transportation plan. One is Sudbury. It runs, it exists, a portion of it exists, and that's how Arbor Ridge access, derives access to Weimar. But this transportation plan calls for it to connect out to the east, all the way, actually, all the way, all the way east to Rogers, but this, obviously, just stubbing at the end of this parcel. And then Adams is shown here in blue. So you can see that the Adams in the transportation plan doesn't actually entirely stay on this parcel, but the northern stub of Adams is adjacent to the parcel, and so is the southern stub. So the petitioner is going to go forward, and we are, they have proposed to include the entirety of Adams on their portion. So again, the transportation plan's kind of illustrative location of that road has it going through the county parcel as well as the park. And so that is adjusted in the plan done by the petitioner. So they will plat and build Adams and Sudbury. There is a third road you can see. So, oh, sorry. Here we go. This is how they will realign This is how they will realign Adams in their development plan. So to the north is the northern Adams connection, the southern Adams connection are the two points that are fixed, and instead of having Adams run straight down, it will curve to stay on this property so that it can be built in one, through one development process. So they will build Adams as well as Sudbury, and then there's a third road, you can see here a southern connection to Weimar Road. That connection out east is predicated on the idea that the road could follow the Duke easement all the way out to the road to the east. When the trail was being planned that will also be in that Duke easement, it came to light that there's not enough room there for both, because it's very space limited at the far eastern end. So we will likely bring forward a transportation plan amendment to release the rest of that connection. So they have planned a connection that will go to Breaking A Way to the south and then a stub to the west, and you can see that here in their mobility plan. So they will not take the stub all the way to the eastern property line because that road connection will never happen, but they will connect to Adams and have a stub in the event that the property to the west ever were to be sold and developed, then there could be another vehicular connection to Weimar. But they will also take the right-of-way south to connect to Breaking A Way, which already exists to the south of this property. So again, this is the mobility map that is proposed as part of the subdivision, I'm sorry, that will be part of the PUD, but the plating of the roads is part of subdivision process. The two main roads, again, that I mentioned, Sudbury and Adams, because those are in the transportation plan, will have to be built up front, and they will both contain protected bike lanes as well as this connector road, the blue road that connects them in the middle of the parcel. And then the other roads will meet other road designs that you saw in your packet. So one of the things that we look for in the transportation plan in new road planned areas is gridded streets. That is a little bit difficult to achieve here because of all of the environmental constraints, and so we have worked with the petitioner to add connections that made sense here in this main area as well as the portion on the east end. So here you can see, as I mentioned, the protected bike lanes will run on Adams, Sudbury, and the road connector. And then there will be a connection of the trail that will come through from the east, from the Duke easement, that will connect down to an existing trail that is adjacent to Breaking A Way to the south. So again, the initial idea in the transportation plan is a direct connection west for that bike and pedestrian trail, but realistically, going south provides an existing connection now and doesn't cross the stream and also isn't predicated on further development to the southwest, which is not currently planned. So we're going to talk a little bit about the district ordinance. So the district ordinance, again, sets the development and use requirements for the PUD. The petitioner has to choose base districts from our Unified Development Ordinance, and then obviously, in a PUD situation, they are amending those regulations toward the specific ones of their PUD. And so in this situation, they chose mixed-use neighborhood scale as the mixed-use district that they would use as their base, and created two mixed-use districts for the PUD. And then they chose residential high-density multifamily as a residential district and created three separate residential districts in the PUD, and they are carrying over, Parks and Open Space, naming it the same thing, Parks and Open Space in their PUD. So this is their proposed designation map. So to be clear, the other map that you've seen of the five neighborhoods, that is those, each five, each of those five areas will be developed separately, and they are each on their own schedule. And then this map indicates what they can do in those neighborhoods. So this is what we would akin to our more traditional zoning map. On our city zoning map, the zoning designation for this property will be PUD. But then when you go into the PUD, you see this zoning map that's more particular and indicates what can be done where. So I'm going to go through those uses briefly. So their least intense zoning district is the R designation, so you can see those blue areas outlined here. There are 20 uses proposed for that district with eight of those being accessory, and so the focus of that district is largely single-family or duplex residential development, with some of our other kind of neighborhood uses that we see in many of our residential districts like place of worship or community center. So this zoning designation, they have placed in sensitive areas, so either immediately adjacent to existing single-family, to existing development like north at Arbor Ridge, or surrounded by environmental constraints, as you can see there on the east side. RH1 is the next slightly more intense residential district. It allows 31 uses, with again, eight of those being accessory. So it contains all of the same use allowances as the R district with the addition of triplex, fourplex, and some multifamily uses. So in the RH1, the maximum number of units you can have in one of the multifamily buildings is 25, and if they're, but if they're using the affordable housing incentives, that can be increased to 50. So that area, again, it's right along the floodplain, there's floodplain along that side of Weimar there, it's close to the existing development to the south, so it is slightly more intense than the adjacent R district, but does have some limitations on size. And then the RH2 is the next residential district, and again, increasing the number of uses allowed, becoming slightly more intense. So we are at 39 uses for the RH2, with six of those being accessory or temporary. So similar uses to the R and the RH1 with the addition of supportive housing, as well as some of our professional services such as fitness center and office. And then the used vehicle parking garage is also included in this district. And I will note the one that's kind of here where there's hatching over it, this would be the location of the fire station and trailhead, so it would be immediately adjacent to the trail coming in through the Duke easement to the east. Next, we have the MN designation. It has the most options, it's the most intense designation in the PUD and is the central location for the Everest Center. It allows 52 uses, with only six of those being accessory or temporary. The only residential use allowed in this district is multifamily, and the group living uses are reduced from what is allowed in the RH2. This area contains more commercial and public-facing uses, such as art gallery, museum, or library, and uses like medical clinic are included as well. It contains the same professional service uses as the RH2 with a couple of additions. And then this district contains by far the most retail options, excuse me, as well as all of the food, beverage, and lodging uses in the PUD, including hotel and motel use. So this area is intended to be kind of the central hub of the neighborhoods surrounding it. So incorporates, again, as I said, much of the district center, which is in the Everest Center neighborhood. And so the last designation is the MX, so you can see that here on the eastern side, slightly less intense, the last developable designation, I should say. It has 43 uses with six that are temporary or accessory, and the only residential uses allowed there are dwelling multifamily and dwelling live-work. It has a number of the same, it has the same group living options as RH2, and all of the public civic uses that are possible in the PUD are possible here, and is just a kind of less intense commercial, but on the more intense side of residential options. And then finally, this map's kind of funny, but this is the PO designation area. So the PO designation includes only six potential uses: solar collector, grounder, building-mounted, wind energy system, small, electric vehicle charging facility, swimming pool, seasonal sales, and special events. So while all of the uses are shown with the UDO-specific use, sorry, the UDO use-specific standards attached, because of the nature of this PUD, much of this land will be in environmental protective easements, so it's very unlikely that actual development would occur in these PO areas. So because they needed to designate a district for the entire PUD, these areas are designated PO, they've limited the uses allowed, they have left some in, but because much of the area will be in preservation or conservation easement, it's very largely unavailable for So that is the proposed designation map. The petitioner is using uses that originate in the UDO except for two uses. So we called those out in the staff report, and I'm just going to briefly discuss them now: surface parking lot and off-site surface parking lot shared. So they are both, excuse me, proposed as permitted in the MN, so again, in the central portion, and the second one is also permitted in the MX. So for the first use, which is called surface parking lot, it's intended to be allowed for parking lots of no more than 50 vehicles and requires a 600-foot separation between surface parking lots, and it is not tied to the approval of a different development. The second use, off-site parking, surface parking lot shared, does not have a parking space total limit or spatial separation requirement, but it's only allowed when it is proposed with a development plan for a different use. Okay, so in Bloomington, you can't just build a parking lot, that's not a use that we have, you're not allowed to do that. But in this case, the petitioner is proposing to have these flexible parking lot uses, they both have time limits on them, and it's, the idea is that as the property slowly develops, for example, you may have multifamily use that's coming in that isn't big enough to support its own parking garage, so they may have surface parking for a limited amount of time, but as other projects go up around, then that land that's supporting surface parking lot may be able to be developed with a project that can support a parking garage as well as another development or a parking garage only on that land. So the idea is that while the need may not be there up front for a structure, that land could be used as surface parking again for a limited amount of time, and then basically, the time limits are included in this district ordinance, and if the time limits pass and the properties aren't going to be developed further, then the parking lots have to come out and be re-greened. So it's kind of at your own risk for a developer if they want to choose to have a surface parking lot for a limited amount of time. If they are unable to have that property redevelop into another use within the time limit, then they will have to do vacant lot landscaping standards and put the property back to green. So the first use can be approved for three years with a potential of two one-year extensions, and that's the surface parking lot, the one with the separation. And the second use can be approved for three years with the potential for one three-year extension. So that allows some flexibility for the development while also ensuring that those parking lots aren't there in perpetuity. Okay, so I'm going to briefly go over some of the dimensional standards, and then we will talk in a little bit more detail about height. So again, in the R district, that is primarily single-family and duplex, that is what is allowed there. And so we are looking at lot areas of 1,000 square feet in that designation. In the RH1, it's, and the RH2, it's 2,000 square feet, and in the MN, it's 5,000, and it's 5,000 in the MX as well. The minimum lot widths are, we have gotten some questions about those, so for example, in the R area, the minimum lot width is 15 feet, which is very small, but does, you know, leave opportunity, obviously you could build on more than one. It also leaves opportunity for lots to be created with paired homes or a series of homes like condos that you could actually own the lot and not just the building. 15 feet isn't very wide, so it's very likely that you would build on at least two, and so the petitioner can speak to a little bit more from the developer's side about why wanting to include those small numbers was important to them. So also, the districts, all of the districts have front build-to ranges, so in the R, so this area here on the screen, and again, the RH1 and the RH2, so all of the primarily residential districts have build-to ranges of 5 to 15 feet, so meaning that the front of your building has to be within 5 to 15 feet of your front property line. In the district center, that front area is 0 to 10, and that's the same in the MX as well. So basically, all of the districts supporting building front design to bring the buildings to the road and not having large front yards to increase that interface with pedestrians on the road. And then in the PO district, as I mentioned before, very unlikely to be developed, but it does have some of its own development standards, which you can see in the packet. So probably the, one of the most important development standards to discuss is the height. So again, different for each district. In the R district, the height maximum is 40 feet, which amounts to three or four stories. In the RH1 and the RH2, the height maximum is 63 feet, which amounts to five to six stories. And then in both of those districts, we have a, above the third story, any stories above the third story have to be stepped back 15 feet from the front building wall. So we see that in some of, that's been in some of the downtown overlay districts for a number of years. If you're over a certain height, a certain number of stories, all of the other stories above that have to be built back. And so you can see that at the building at Third and Washington where DaVinci is. When you're on Washington, you can see three stories. If you go farther back, if you go down Third, you can tell that it's four, because you can see that top story. But when you're on the street next to the building, you don't feel that extra height because it's stepped back 15 feet. So they are including that in the RH1 and the RH2 districts. And then in the, let's see, in the MX district, we are, they are proposing, we're looking at 75 feet, which amounts to roughly seven stories, and then stories above the fifth story have to be set back that 15 feet, as I mentioned before. And then the largest height is in the MN district in the center of the development with 86 feet, which is roughly eight stories. And then the step back required is 15 feet stories over the sixth story. So you would have six floors, and the ones above those would be stepped back. And we will talk shortly about, these are the base heights, right? So this is what they're saying they want the maximum heights to be without incentives. And then with incentives, they want the buildings to be taller, so we'll talk about that shortly. So in all designations, except the R designation, additional height can be earned through the use of incentives, and in all designations, accessory structure height maximum is 30 feet, and except for in the PO, it's 20. So you can see here where these little black rectangles are, they have built-in transition standards to the Arbor Ridge condominium neighborhood. So let's see, buildings on the south side of Sudbury, across from the condominiums, so that are in the Everest District, so that's the larger rectangle in the middle, they have an additional step back of 10 feet for the fourth through sixth stories. So as I mentioned before, in the yellow, above six stories, that's when your building steps back 15 feet. But if you are in the large rectangle here in the center, you have to step back 10 feet for the fourth through sixth floors. We have gotten a lot of feedback from residents of Arbor Ridge, and the petitioner has worked to adjust the original standards to try to pull some of the feeling of the height of those buildings off of the Arbor Ridge neighborhood, and this is one of the ways that they're proposing to do that, so that they aren't as out of scale as the buildings that are existing there now. So again, 10 feet back once you hit the fourth floor, and then once you hit the seventh floor, you still have to go the 15 feet back. Buildings built on the south side of Sudbury in the Shasta neighborhood, Shasta, Shasta, have a 10-foot step back for the fourth floor. So that's in the blue here on the left. These buildings have to be stepped back if they're four stories tall, that fourth floor has to be stepped back, again, so that the building only reads as three stories from the road. And then buildings in Whitney Glen, that's the vertical rectangle here, adjacent to the Arbor Ridge condominiums, have an eight-foot side building setback and a 20-foot rear building setback, which is much larger than what the rest of the development has, again, to pull those off of the Arbor Ridge neighborhood, and they also have a five-foot step back at the fourth floor. Okay, so another big thing that affects how big a building reads, which is something that we obviously talk about a lot in planning, and you hear as well about people's satisfaction or dissatisfaction with the size of buildings in town, is building floor plate maximums. or dissatisfaction with the size of buildings in town, is building floor plate maximums. So the petitioner has included building floor plate maximums for the use dwelling multifamily in their P U D U-specific standards. So in the designation areas, R H 1 and R H 2, the maximum building floor plate allowance is proposed to be 10,000 square feet. So you can see those areas highlighted here. And then in the M N and the M X, the maximum building floor plate is proposed to be 30, was originally proposed to be 30,000 square feet. There was a condition of approval added that was approved by Plan Commission that for by right, that would be 20,000 square feet and that projects that use an incentive could have up to 30. So in these two areas, it's 20,000 square feet maximum and 30 with one incentive. So just to give you an idea of some of the buildings that we hear about and their sizes related to the maximums that are being proposed here. If you're using the perimeter of Smallwood, it's about 70,000 square feet. It's quite big. They have punched openings, so we put in that size as well, in case you're familiar with that. The Graduate is about 26,000. The Eastern Building of Evolve is about 48,000, a fairly new building that was built at the northeast corner of 17th and Lincoln, right along 17th. It's kind of a long building. That's about 5,000 square feet. And the Verve, which is the Motel 6 building, the big one that's right along College Walnut, is 65,000. So, you know, that building reads big. It definitely has some architectural things that break it up visually. But if you look at it from the aerial, you can tell it's quite big. It's 65,000, so much bigger than the buildings, twice the size of the maximum building proposed here. And then if you look at the proposal that was done at Third and Grant, the Eastern Building there is about 16,000 square feet. Okay, I'm just going to say there are a lot of other developmental detail things we could talk about if you want to. I'm just, that are in the code, like parking and loading, building and site design, you know, landscaping. Many of these things, they are just pulling straight from the U D O. And I'm happy to discuss any differences or details that struck you in the staff report. But I think more importantly, I want to get to the discussing of the incentives and then also the environmental issues going on here and what's being done there. Because I also don't want to, I want to try not to talk for an hour and 45 minutes. So we'll see. Okay, so for the environmental protection, you can see in this map here, what is indicated are the areas that have been called out as areas that need environmental protection. So either through conservation, through some sort of easement. So they have mapped out the development that they would like to do with those environmental constraints around it. One thing I noted at Plan Commission, and I will note here, is that this is a guide. You're not approving these maps and, you know, the developer can't come in and say, hey, council said these maps are okay if we find, for example, a karst feature somewhere else on site that wasn't originally identified. They are proposing to use all of the U D O environmental standards regulations. So as we go, as they go to develop this site, if other environmental constraints or the shapes and sizes of these environmental constraints are shown to be incorrect, they will have to be fixed. And that could, you know, slightly affect their, the development portion of what they want to do. So that will, I believe, be ironed out when we do the primary plat. So when you do a primary plat, you have to put all of the environmental constraints into easements at that time. So we do not have a lot of reason to believe that this isn't, isn't fairly accurate. We have been raising concern for a little while about, for example, tree preservation areas shown. So I'll just, so I'll explain that and hopefully that'll help shed light on what I'm talking about a little bit. At this scale, showing the perimeter of all of the tree preservation areas and the buffer that's required for them is hard to show and confirm. So we have worked with the petitioner back and forth, reviewing the documents that they've given us and marking those up. And the petitioner is very, is very clear on that we do think there's more preservation here than they're showing, that that may slightly affect their development plans. And they understand that that might change at the plating level, so we want to make sure that you all understand that as well. So this site, as I said, has a number of environmental constraints. You can see in this map floodplain, as I mentioned, on the west side here over by Weemer, as well as some riparian buffers around water features. For example, there may be an additional water feature here to the northwest of the stream that shows up on some of our mapping. And so that's something that we'll work with the petitioner to confirm. The floodplain again is on the west side of the property and presents some constraints as far as connectivity. So when you're looking at the road design that they've submitted, some of that is dictated by where this floodplain lies. We had a lot of discussions at the beginning about additional connectivity to Weemer and that that would be beneficial. But protecting the floodplain and not further burdening it were more important than that particular connectivity. And you will probably hear or have seen in the letters that we've received from the public, there is a lot of concern about flooding in this area. When Twin Lakes was put in, the water pattern in this area was changed. And so a lot of neighbors who have been here for that since then or for that, since that happened, are very concerned about this development. So we have tried to put into place some conditions in the staff report, working with Catherine Zager at C B U, to address not increasing the runoff from this property to be negatively affecting those properties around it. So that's something that we can talk more about as well. So again, a couple of areas of riparian buffer. Tree preservation is kind of hard to see on here, but it's basically these slightly darker bubbly areas are the areas that have been identified by the petitioner as potential tree preservation. And the way the U D O works is that you don't have to preserve all of it, but you have to preserve a percentage of it based on how much is here. So we would work with the petitioner to, and the senior environmental planner, to identify those areas of highest quality, because there are areas with invasives, you know, that may meet our definition of closed canopy, but that we otherwise wouldn't, you know, want to preserve. So we would work with the petitioner and staff to identify the best areas to preserve and have already kind of started that conversation. So again, this is another exhibit showing the actual areas, identifying some of those tree preservation areas. Another thing we try to do with the tree preservation areas is having contiguous tree preservation areas. So for example, you can see Arbor Ridge to the northwest. There may be opportunity for tree preservation immediately adjacent to extend that area. This tree preservation area here in the northeast would be adjacent to what would likely end up being a tree preservation area when the county develops. And then here to the south, immediately adjacent to the park. So extending those protected areas is a priority when we are deciding which areas to preserve. So this has the tree preservation findings on it as well as karst. So there are a lot of karst features here. You will probably hear, and I believe some, a letter may have been included, that there is some concern about karst. A lot of people who are familiar with this particular land or just this area do think that there is probably quite a bit of karst here. So that's something we will have to narrow down with the petitioner as plating continues and we include it as a condition of approval, that we have a geologist's study indicating where those are. So this is a little bit different way to present that, mostly located in the treeed areas as well. And then the, one of the last things we look at as well as wetlands is steep slopes. So you can see those indicated here and again, required to preserve a percentage of that. I, there is, I, we will have to revisit this with legal in light of the state potential change to what we can regulate for steep slopes, but this is based on our existing regulations. Okay, this is the slide that didn't go very well, Plan Commission. It's in the packet, but I, can I hand them these, Stephen?
There's extras for other. Sorry.
Okay, Stephen's going to bring you, hold on. It's just one sheet. It probably needs to be more than that, I don't know. And then there's extras for those of you who are, if you want to see it. This is the triggers and phasing discussion that we had, or this is the triggers and phasing that we're proposing and is a condition of approval. So the petitioner proposed their own and then we worked with them to kind of amend So what the matrix is trying to do is take a number of the ideas from the originally proposed matrix that was included from the petitioner and then adding additional triggers that involve the delivery of affordable housing units, for example, in the first two phases, as well as ongoing expectations for stormwater protection. So again, you know, we recognize this is a gigantic to the community project, you know, it's a lot of land, we don't have a lot of extra land, and we want to try to make sure that we are addressing all the concerns that we're hearing from the public. And so we also want to believe that the developer's going to develop this and we want to make that possible as well. So we are trying to, with this matrix, trying to acknowledge the phasing and encourage that the, that the early phases be finished. It seems that obviously maybe the most financially productive phase will be Everest Center. But as a community, we also want single-family homes and complexes and small buildings. So trying to encourage that the areas of the development that focus on those types of uses will get done in a timely manner related to being able to move on to new phases. So I'll just go through this a little bit briefly. And I'll say, the reason to kind of include this has nothing to do with the developer. We have full faith that this will happen. It's that this is part of a larger P U D, the Sudbury P U D, that didn't develop. And what they did was develop out until they had to build any big infrastructure and then they just stopped. And so what, we are trying to avoid that. And you know, that may, I'm sure there were a lot of reasons that they ended up doing it that way. But we're trying to craft a P U D that will make that difficult and that we will get some public benefit upfront. So the first two lines you'll see are that Adams Street and Sudbury Drive will be platted, bonded in construction with, excuse me, and constructed with the first plat in the P U D. So those two roads, again, one to connect Adams from the north to the south, provide a new connection there for people in this part of town, and the second to extend Sudbury to the eastern property line for a future hopeful connection to Strong Drive over by Catalent, that those roads will be completed and accepted before we will issue any building occupancy recommendation, recommendations for this P U D. So those roads will happen first. What the previous P U D did was give like a maximum number of trips per day or, you know, roofs that, roofs that could be built before the roads, that were allowed to be built before the roads had to be built. And so all of those houses were built and then the roads weren't built. So we're putting the roads up front. And then there is that connector road that you saw that was blue on the roadways map. It's called Street F in Everest Center, having that that road will be completed and accepted before we will issue any occupancies for Everest Center. So making sure that the interconnectivity is happening as well. Land for the fire station in Trailhead, that that is to be delineated as intended for the city on the plat for the first lots in the Denali neighborhood in which it's located. And then that transfer will be dependent upon an agreement with the city. Basically, you know, we don't necessarily need that land until the trail is going to happen, but we want to make sure that when the trail happens, we will be able to do that. So M O U for funding and construction of off-site sewer improvements. The petitioner is already in, working on an M O U with City of Bloomington Utilities. And that has to be fully executed before the first grading permit will be issued for the site. Additionally, before that grading permit will be issued, we will have to have an M O U for funding and construction of the off-site transportation items that will come out of the traffic study. Number, the next one down, I'm sorry, I should have numbered these, construction of additional stormwater protections. This is one that is responsive to what we've heard, trying to be responsive to what we've heard from the neighbors. So the trigger for the specific infrastructure is that any, any stormwater protections designated as necessary by City of Bloomington Utilities to be installed with the first grading permit will have to be installed with the issuance of the first grading permit. And then before each grading permit is issued, so the way it works in the city is every time you go to do a new project or a new phase of a project, you request a grading permit. And then we go over all of the erosion controls and items of, that you'll be doing under construction and then also you're verifying your final site plan through that process. So there will be a lot of grading permits on this site. So before each one, the site as a whole will be analyzed by City of Bloomington Utilities to make sure that the erosion control measures that have already been approved and are supposed to be installed are working as expected. And if those aren't working, they'll have to update those before we'll issue new grading permits. So trying to have little stopgaps at each expansion of the actual development and earth movement to make sure that what's already done is working. Agreement for the trail and the Duke easement. Again, that's something that is executed with Duke Energy and we would be a third party to that. And again, we want that to be done when it's feasible for us to actually complete our portion of the trail as well. The next few are related to the, getting the infrastructure in each of the neighborhoods. So the internal infrastructure for Shasta to be completed and accepted within five years of the first Shasta secondary plat for developable lots or the end of 2028, whichever comes first. So we wanted to put in development deadlines and also time deadlines based on when they have told us that they're going to deliver these neighborhoods. So one question I think that came up at Plan Commission was what if they can't do it? So we would have enforcement action. I mean, this is part of their approved P U D, if it is to be approved. And then if they're, you know, if something happens and there's going to be a domino effect and they're not going to be able to meet these, we would ask them to come back to you and, you know, to update this. So each of these time limits is based on, or excuse me, each of these delivery years is based on the delivery years they already committed to us. And then the final three, certificate of zoning compliance for first building in Everest Center. Before, so a certificate of zoning compliance is our portion of the building permit. And before we would release that for the first building in the large center, at least 50% of the total planned units in the first two neighborhoods have to be under construction or completed. And at least 25% of the total planned affordable units in those neighborhoods have to be under construction or completed. So again, the idea of, we don't want them to build 40 houses in the single-family area and then jump to the big, you know, eight-story tall multifamily buildings and leave behind the smaller, smaller development areas that they have rightly used as a reason to say like, hey, this is a good plan. We're, you know, we're providing housing across the spectrum. We want to make sure that those smaller density or smaller unit areas are developed as well. So we, that's why we put in these stopgaps. So Everest Center can't, so they could, for example, pull a grading permit in Everest Center and get started, but they can't pull a building permit to start an actual building until those thresholds are met. And then Sandia Place has similar, but up to 75% for the first two neighborhoods and then 50% for the affordable units in the first two neighborhoods. And then Whitney Glen, which is the last proposed neighborhood to be built, is that 90% of the total planned units in any one of the preceding neighborhoods have final occupancy recommendation before that begins. So we're trying to balance wanting them to be able to move forward and keep going in each neighborhood with making sure that the neighborhoods are completed as well. So that's that. Hold on. I am going to try to move quickly because I'm going to run out of time probably. Okay, so the comprehensive plan designation. As I said, this is neighborhood residential, which is primarily composed of residential land uses with densities lower than what they're proposing, right? So between two and 15 units per acre. However, this is also in one of our focus areas called the West Fork Clear Creek Focus Area that indicates that, so you can see that kind of outlined in green here. So while the comprehensive plan calls for less density in this area than this particular P U D proposes, the plan does acknowledge that this site is part of a much larger region in the southwestern part of Bloomington, again, called the West Fork Clear Creek Focus Area, that contains some of our last large open spaces for development. So additionally, while the number of potential units is included by the petitioner, the U D O has almost entirely moved away from regulating development based on the number of units and moved toward focusing on design. and moved toward focusing on design. So a question that we have gotten, you know, is we have heard comment about density and it's a completely valid topic to discuss, of course, but it is not something that the UDO uses anymore to regulate what can go somewhere. We, the UDO regulates what, what size of building things can, what size of buildings can be in place, how much open space is required, what sort of connections are required, landscaping, setbacks and things like that. And then those build in how big the structure can be. We don't talk about dwelling unit equivalence anymore, things like that. That was all removed from the UDO when we did the large update. And of course, our comprehensive plan in a number of places repeatedly calls out the need for more housing, particularly in the community profile portion of the document. So that is what this petition is trying to address and we think is in line with that portion of the comprehensive plan. I put this in in case anyone would like to discuss it. You'll recall that a number of years ago, the previous administration had Schmidt, had Schmidt and Associates do a plan for possible development in this area. Again, a number of areas designated for single-family and multifamily, they were also proposing some sort of kind of commercial hubs further to the east and apartments and townhomes. Okay, we'll go over the incentives and then we're almost done. I, this is in the packet, but I'm just going to read through it so we can kind of hopefully all follow along. So they are using the incentive structure from the Unified Development Ordinance. I should have said this at the beginning, but I do want to stress where we are now is just so different from where they were when they first came to us, where they had written so many of their own regulations and tweaked so many of our regulations. And what we have worked with them to say, especially for example, for the environmental standards is you just aren't going to be able to make these less stringent. So we just recommend that you adopt the UDO. So they did that for all of the environmental standards. And I said this at Plan Commission, this is going to sound like broken record, I hope he's like tuning out, but I am not a person who thinks like, oh, you worked really hard on this, so we should like give you extra credit. If it's not good, I, you know, good that you worked hard, but it needs to be better. We do think, the department does think that this is a good plan unit development. There are some things that you will discuss that we have called out in the staff report that could maybe be better, or you will decide whether or not they're serving the interests of Bloomington and that they should be changed. But I do want to call out that there have been so many changes to the original proposal that they gave us and this has really improved quite a bit and we do think that it is a good plan that can be done. And one of those things is sticking with our incentive structure, just so that that can be easily applied. They have proposed some changes to it, which again, in a plan unit development is very standard and we assume that that's something that you will discuss, so I'm going to talk about that briefly. So the standards in the UDO related to reduced bulk height requirements in our R1 through our four zoning districts are being applied to the single-family and plex developments in their three residential districts. So that makes sense because they are for single-family and plexes and so they're applying them to the areas in which they will have a single-family and plexes. Their PUD also explicitly states, as I had mentioned earlier, that those projects in their R district cannot seek additional height incentives. So they are maxed out at 40 feet no matter what in those areas that they have adjacent to sensitive areas and existing residential. The big difference is that the PUD proposes that tier-two projects that are seeking affordable housing and sustainable incentives, oh, is this right? Oh yeah, sorry. They increase their height by additional two stories not to exceed 24 feet with an additional 10-foot step back. The thing is, is that that height increase is in addition to the two stories received initially from the tier-two affordable housing incentives. So you get the housing incentive and you get two stories. And if you do sustainability too, you get another two stories. So now you get four stories, where that is more than what the UDO allows. The UDO allows one additional story on top of the original two and it has to be 50%. So it's really like two and a half. So the way that the UDO works, if you use the affordable housing incentives, you can get two additional stories. If you add on sustainability, you can get half of whatever your coverage is. So if you have a 10,000 square foot building, for example, then you can get 5,000 square feet for a third story and that's the most you can get. They're, they are proposing four full floors with the step backs that were already mentioned earlier. So in the most intense district of MN, in the middle of the district, excuse me, in the middle of the PUD, that would allow for 12 stories. We included a condition of approval that Plan Commission carried forward, limiting the locations where that extra height incentive can be used to four blocks in the development. We think that the southern four blocks in MN probably make the most sense and I think the petitioner agrees with that as well, but that was not particularly dictated in, in the condition that Plan Commission approved. All right, so in another change to the incentives, positive for the community, is that in the MN and MX designation, a product, a project utilizing the affordable housing incentives has to include 20% of their units at or below 120% of area median income, where the rest of the project and all of the UDO requirements are 15. So they're saying that in those two zoning designation areas, so in the Everest Center and in part of the eastern portion, if you have a project that wants to use affordable housing incentives for additional height, then you have to dedicate 20% of your units to affordable housing instead of 15. So that is a positive. And I already mentioned that in the RH1 designation, the, a project utilizing affordable housing incentives can have a maximum of 50 units per building, which likely would, it would still fit within, would have to fit within, but could be done within their building size max of, building floor plate max of 10,000 square feet and four stories tall. They removed the eligibility for sustainable development incentives, which makes sense because in the UDO, you're required to be on a property that's basically urban, that's already served by sewer and water, and that obviously can't be the case here. And then the PUD clarifies that single-family and duplex development in the three residential districts that meet sustainability development criteria could also have the reduced bulk requirements, not just affordable, the affordable housing criteria. And then again, no additional height in the R. So that's a lot to take in for the incentives. But I think the main takeaway probably for you all is those areas that will require more, a higher percentage, that's good, that's positive. Higher percentage in the MN and the MX for projects have to, if they want to do affordable housing incentives, they have to do 20% of their units. And then also the other big one to think about, of course, is proposing four additional floors if you use both incentives instead of the two and a half that the UDO allows. So briefly to discuss public benefit, of course, additional housing utilizing and near existing infrastructure, that's something that helps us not induce sprawl, fire station land for potential expansion. The roadway connectivity, I think, is especially the Adams Street connection and then future Sudbury Drive connection can help easier movement around in this area. There will also be off-site roadway improvements that will be done that are determined in the traffic study and the trail connectivity. So them building their trail portion that would connect our city trail coming from the east through the Duke easement to the existing city trail to the south next to Breaking Away, as well as the Trailhead land, the opportunity for workforce and affordable housing, and then utilizing some sustainability development practices, which are outlined again in the packet and we can discuss more if you would like. I'm just going to not use my time for this. I'm almost done though, but I want to reserve time in case they need it. So there are a number of conditions included in your report, many of them I've already kind of touched on. So we asked that the district ordinance be amended, let's see, in such a way so that the MN and MX building floor plate maximum may be changed to 20,000 square feet and that they could get up to 30,000 square feet by using an incentive. So the Plan Commission approved that change. And then we also, oh, I'm sorry, I should have clarified this. The four-story height for both incentives, we had proposed that it only be four blocks in the MN and the Plan Commission took the petitioner's suggestion that to also add in two blocks in the MX. So it's six total blocks in the development can use the four-story addition from the incentives. We wanted to address the required, we wanted to incorporate some of the east-west alleys. So we included that here as well and the petitioners were amenable to that. We wanted to address a concern from the neighbors to the southwest about separation. That property has a large, like a three-acre sink, former quarry site on it. And so they have a fence and wanting, when the previous PUD went through, it was their understanding that that fence would be maintained. Obviously, that property owner doesn't own the property anymore, so including in this petition, the developer or anyone in the future will help maintain that fence until such time if they were to sell it and develop it, then they wouldn't need to, but as long as they're there, they will help them with that. Amending the preliminary plan to include the matrix I showed. And number three is one that we will maybe talk about more or maybe at the next hearing. It is related to the traffic analysis. So you can see some edits that we made here from what was in the original Plan Commission packet to what was approved at the Plan Commission and suggested by the petitioner. And they're fine edits, but at this point, we don't have the full traffic analysis. We have a traffic study and that's great and we have the appendix and that's also very useful, but there are supplementary documents that need to be submitted and we don't have a full version of that. Ideally, all of that would have been done before Plan Commission and/or tonight. So I have said to the petitioner and maybe said to Plan Commission, I don't remember, that this condition may need to be altered if it isn't completed before you see it on May 1st. Because my concern is, the department concern is that I don't want the memorandum of understanding to become a negotiation between the petitioner who now has an approval and the city engineer about what things they're willing to do, because that should have already been done. We should have that here and be telling you what those items are. And that, because that wasn't done, isn't the fault of the traffic, of the city engineer. So I would like to be able to, if you all are amenable, to potentially amend that condition so that the decision about what off-site improvements will be required will be that of the city engineer, not of a negotiation between the petitioner and, and him. So that's something we can talk about more if need be. Number four, the car study I mentioned. Number five is the MOU with CBU that I mentioned. Number six is, and number seven are the more particular items related to stormwater and flooding that were included from City of Bloomington Utilities staff. And number eight, related to the trail. Number nine, we included number nine, it says, "The petitioner will continue to work with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department and the city may alter the percentage of units, 15%, required in particular neighborhoods if housing is provided that meets the needs of households that make less than 90% AMI for Monroe County, as is allowed by PUD qualifying standard number three." So PUD, yeah, sorry. So PUD qualifying standard number three is the one that says, in a PUD, you have to dedicate 15% of units at this rate. But it also says that that can be altered by the city. And so in, in this case, we wanted to make it clear, something that we heard from Housing and Neighborhood Development staff was that they would be comfortable in some neighborhoods if that percentage was lower, if they could get more, if they could get housing at a lower rate. So if we could get housing at 80 or 90 or lower, that, that would be more beneficial to have housing at that number, even if it was less number of units. So that is not a guarantee that that will happen. We just wanted to make that clear to you all in the Plan Commission that that's something we would be exploring with the petitioner. For example, if they could do a project at a much lower rate for one particular neighborhood, we may entertain having that number of total units be less than 15. And then the last condition is just to clarify what I mentioned about not building that eastern leg of the road that won't go anywhere. And I think that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Can we hear from the petitioner? You have about 25 minutes?
I mean, I think we probably are like 10 or 12 minutes combined. I forgot to look. Okay.
I look, we started at 7:33.
I think we'll be short, but if you need to wave us off for something, let me know. I'm Angela Parker, by the way, entitlements counsel for the petitioner with Paganelle Law Group, which used to be Carmen Parker is probably the name you're used to. We just changed that on April 1st. I thought first of all, I would introduce who the team is that's been working on this for quite a long time. Travis Vinsel behind me, most of you know him, he's with Sullivan Development, familiar face around Bloomington, is one of the petitioners along with the Ridge Group. And we have online tonight Tyler Ridge and Adam Canola with the Ridge Group that are the petitioners for this PUD. We also have design consultants who have been working with us for a long time, from Stantec Engineering, Jared Ward and Patrick Swim, also our architect Billy Ponco and a host of other people, Amanda Johnson on the traffic study that sounds like we still need to get our act together on that. But that's the team. So first of all, I would like to thank the planning department. As you can plainly see, Jackie Scanlon has done a heavy lift here and it's been a lot of work. So we're very grateful to her, also to Eric Grillick, who I think is probably online, to former director Robinson, and of course, looking forward to working with the new planning director, David Hittle. Meeting on this started in 2022, in the fall of 2022. So we've been working on it for a long time. We filed the petition with the Plan Commission in May of 2023. We had four hearings with the Plan Commission and a little bit over nine months to get our approval, which we're very happy to have on March 19th, to bring us before the council tonight. So we're happy to have a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission and we certainly very respectfully request that you consider and approve this PUD. The process has been long, but it's been very important and we recognize the importance of taking those steps. We're grateful for the feedback and guidance. We've met weekly with the planning department for over a year, which is a lot of meetings and a lot of investment of time and commitment. The feedback from the Plan Commission with the additional conditions that you heard about tonight, which we have agreed to and have worked through pretty significantly. We've had lots of meetings with the neighbors, the neighborhood association, both onsite here in our office and other places, and we've really appreciated that. The process that Jackie described earlier really has made this a better proposal and so we're grateful that we do have a better proposal here tonight from where we started. So sincere thank to all of you and including those that are here who I know will speak to this tonight. We've all heard, well, I also wanted to note one other thing. We have letters of support and I'm not sure they got in the packet and maybe I need to provide those to Jackie, but we, we have letters of support from the project through the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, the Board of Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce, Habitat for Humanity, the United Way, CFC Properties, the Community Foundation and ROI, and the Trades District. And I think the common theme in all of those letters of support, which if you haven't seen them yet, we will get those to you certainly before the next meeting, is to create needed housing, both affordable and workforce housing. And we've heard about the ROI study, it's referenced in the report as well, and it recognizes these opportunities that we have to provide housing. And I think the bottom line is Bloomington needs housing. The inventory is low, making it more expensive and it shuts out the opportunity for people to own homes and to have affordable places to live. An interesting statistic in the ROI study that I thought I'd mention is that 72% of the people who work in the City of Bloomington do not live in the City of Bloomington. And I think that speaks somewhat to the problem that we have with housing. So a component of this project is to meet not only the 15% standard for affordable housing, but as Jackie commented, pushing that to 20% in several areas and to spread the affordability factor throughout the entire development. Another interesting projection in the study is the, is the need for housing, I think her report cites it through 2030, but the report actually goes through 2035, of over 4,000 units in the not-too-distant future in Bloomington. And we all recognize that that need gets balanced with other considerations, like the environmental sensitivities that exist. This project proposes 35% of its site be set aside for con- This project proposes 35% of its site be set aside for conservancy in primarily non-buildable areas. It incorporates open park spaces, bike and ped path, trail connectivity, as well as transportation connections, meets the standards of the comprehensive plan, the transportation plan, the studies that are done by the city, the studies that have been done outside of the city, that all demonstrate the need for this project to move forward. We're working with the city on the two MOUs. Those are not quite completed yet, but we're working on them. And I should also note that over the course of this project, for at least the last 15 months, we've met with pretty much all of the department heads in the city, some of them multiple times, to look at what are the needs that are identified as this project unfolds. And as a result, that's where the idea of a fire station came up. We talked a lot about trails, anticipating transit that would be available here. So this effort, I think another point to be made, is that it will take place over a period of years, several years. Will be back before the plan commission and the council, probably multiple times as we subdivide land, as we seek available resources and support from the city to give life to this project. Importantly, this ordinance provides the framework and quite literally lays the foundation for what is to come. And I want to invite Travis to come and make a few comments on that.
Thank you, counsel. Travis Vinsel with Sullivan Development, the petitioner on this project. I'm gonna go off script here, and you can just go to slide eight. You've heard, you've all seen our vision statement. You've, I've met with almost all of you individually, I've taken several of you on a site tour, so I'm not gonna go into a lot. Jackie did a great job. That's because we've worked on this a long time. We are here today for you to continue to hear from you, and for you to hear from other interested parties regarding this project. You've heard from me, you've heard from staff, you're gonna hear from other people. And you're gonna hear specifically about flooding in the area and protecting the existing conditions and new conditions to come. You're gonna hear about Weimar Road traffic, the existing conditions and the conditions to come. You're gonna hear about the environmental constraints of the site. There are environmental constraints at the site. We're preserving and setting aside about 38% of the entire site. Most of that is being set aside because of environmental conditions that exist on the site. You're gonna hear about appropriate building height. We've stepped our buildings back. We've allowed for density, but not for every part of this project to have a monolithic big square, all buildings the same height. There's a lot of variation from areas that can only have three or four stories to areas that could have, with all incentives, eight or 10 stories on certain specific lots. You're gonna hear about a number of maximum housing units. We're using the number 4250. We're using that because you can't do a traffic study, you can't do a utility study unless you have a proposed number of units to generate usage. But our UDO doesn't do that. Our UDO defines buildings, and how many units can go in it is, do you want to put one big unit or six small units? So we've tried to estimate the max number that we think could be on this project. If every lot was built to the smallest, if every incentive is used everywhere, we think we can get to the 4250 units. It might be a little more, it might be a little less. I would discourage us from putting a cap on this, because this is a long period of time. We don't know what the size of homes are going to be, what the living style is going to be over time. We can talk more about that, but that 4250 is not a density that we're seeking, it's a maximum that we think is available, given the UDO and this ordinance. You're also gonna hear about the need for housing in this community. I don't think anyone can argue that there's a great need for housing in Bloomington. This is appropriate place for do so. The comp plan, the ordinance states that it's the right thing to do here, and we've worked really hard to bring a proposal to you that meets the needs and concerns of the entire community at hand. It's been over an 18-month process. If you want to flip to the next slide, we've worked with two administrations, we've worked with two councils on this process, the Planning and Transportation Department, and as Angela said, several other departments. And we look forward to coming back to this podium to address what you hear tonight, to address your questions and concerns on May 1st, to answer those, to show you how we're bringing you a quality project that really will be successful, and can, you can hold us accountable for and fulfill a lot of the needs of this community. With that, I'm going to ask for your approval of PUD 1823, Ordinance 2024-07, with the staff recommendations and reasonable conditions, as approved by the plan commission. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we're done three or four minutes early. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vinsel. All right, now we will move to council member questions, either for the petitioner or for staff. And as noted earlier, we will limit this to four minutes per council member, and I would appreciate if people could use their full four minutes at one time, else it becomes a record-keeping nightmare. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentations. I guess I'll ask this of Ms. Scanlon. So just to, at the 30,000-foot view, which is what we're doing this evening, because we want to hear from public, this is the largest development I've ever seen in 20-plus years, maybe yours is, probably yours as well, of course. It strikes me, just looking at it, its population is one to one and a half times population of Elletsville, going into that 138 acres. So, and it's one of our last remaining developable areas in the city. I know that there are two housing studies that indicate that we need owner-occupied housing in the community. We've had thousands and thousands and thousands of apartments built. In fact, just last week, a 1,200-unit multifamily apartment complex was just, was just granted approval. So we've got these housing studies that are saying this. I know that there are residents looking to escape from a rent trap, and so my question is, of the 42, 4,250 units, how many are apartments, and how many are likely to be owner-occupied? What is the ratio?
Question, I don't know if I can answer it offhand, but I can give you, I can get back to you on that, or the petitioner might know it. I would say that the areas in the R and the RH1 that are focused on detached or attached single-family, those are the main areas with opportunity for purchase. That's not mandated, of course, but that's the type of building that would most likely end up being that. And then some of the other areas that would allow attached as well, you know, could have the opportunity for condo purchasing, of course. We know that, we always know that's an option. But I would say the main areas that would be the biggest focus of owner occupancy would probably be those, those areas. So it was like, it's like 500 units, I think, in 500 or 550 in the first neighborhood, so my guess would be of type, that it would be somewhere around 1,000. I don't know, Mr. Vinsel may have a better, and again, we can't, that's not mandating owner occupancy, but the type of what you would traditionally think is owner-occupied.
Okay, so roughly a quarter are likely to be potential owner-occupied. Is that, Mr. Vinsel, does that comport with your, what Ms. Scanlon said, is that jibe with what you estimate? Okay.
I think potentially, there's 4,250 units that could be owner-occupied. It is illegal for us to legislate and for this body to legislate owner occupancy versus rental occupancy.
No, I'm not asking that. When I'm asking, yeah.
That can only be done through design standards
Right.
and quality
Yes.
of product.
So I guess what I'm saying is, there are multifamily buildings, those are likely to be apartments. And then there's the owner-occupied, single-family duplex townhouses and so forth. What is the ratio of units of the large multifamily versus the likely-to-be-owner-occupied?
There is not a ratio, this dicta, sorry. There is not a ratio in the ordinance that requires a specific number of units to be designed to a specific standard.
No, but it's a PUD, so that we could require it, seems to me. Ms. Scanlon, is that correct? This could be a hard and fast requirement, is the ratio of multifamily versus, I'm sorry, but my time's running low, and I just want to get to this point.
With any reasonable condition, we want to make sure that it obviously complies with state law, so any owner occupancy requirement, we'd need to review that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scanlon, thank you, Mr. Vinsel, I appreciate it.
Are there council questions? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you very much. I'll just go next, because I also had that question. I think that we potentially cannot legislate that, but we can vote no on a PUD if we're not seeing enough owner-occupied units in a development. And I mean, it is, we are like lacking condos in this community, it's very serious. Question for me is, high-level mixed income in neighborhoods is really important to me, and the fact that these are all like secluded areas, to me, isn't as inviting as having things, you know, peppered in. So that's the way it's gonna look, though? One section with big multifamily and one section over here with single-family, is that, that's set right now?
I would say, so we're talking about, so the Shasta Meadow, the neighborhood to the west, is, yeah, up to multifamily, up to 50 is the max there, and then the district center will have larger buildings, and that, and only multifamily is allowed there.
Oops, okay.
For the residential.
What about gas, natural gas in this development? I'm a big fan of all-electric, electrifying the grid, you know?
I believe all of the residential units are electric. That was just something I left out of my, my crush.
So is there gas going in, or?
Our current plan is to not utilize natural gas. There are a few specific uses that are still struggling with that, i.e. coffee shops, the grind their own coffee, are struggling with that. We're not to that stage yet. This property is a Duke-approved neighborhood, where they will come in and help design our, not only our internal grid, but actually help design buildings to be most efficient with all-electric systems. So we're already approved for that program, it's in the part of the PUD that states that that's part of our process. So our goal would be to have only electric, but I can't, number one, I can't legislate no gas. I have to have the opportunity, if somebody has the ability to do that, but that is not our plan.
Okay, you're saying the residentials are going to be all-electric?
Residential are, yes.
Okay, and then it's just commercial, that's a little problematic right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, these are just different questions, right? There are parking lots right now where I guess anyone can park, is that right? Any residents can park in the parking lots? Or the, is it the multifamily, or?
For the, for the off-site park, parking, the two new parking zones?
Yes.
So, yeah, they would be either specific to a business or specific to a residential use, so they would be a residential use that needed more parking, but couldn't have, couldn't, maybe there's a regional garage, so you would put a regional garage like we have downtown. But one restaurant or one apartment building doesn't afford a regional garage. So you would do a surface lot for a period of time until you got the three apartment buildings, or the three businesses that now service the parking structure.
Okay, got it.
But they would be open to the public or anyone that lived or worked there.
Okay, we could, normally what we do with, I mean, I guess last term, what we did a lot was we decoupled parking from rent prices, so that folks without cars weren't subsidizing people with cars and storing them. Is that something that's happening here, too?
Each, each project will be individual how they do that. If it's an affordable housing project, like with the tax credit project, you're not allowed to charge for parking, whatever that kind of parking is. So it would vary by specific project to project.
Okay, so I'll probably just have to follow up on the, the non-affordable ones. Boop, 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 boop. That's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Other council member questions? Councilmember Stossberg.
I'll go ahead and go. So I just, I just want to talk about the height of the MN and the MX for a minute, because as Jackie said, that if incentives are used, the tallest buildings can be 12 stories. And I've been kind of doing some research about how tall are other buildings in Bloomington, and the other buildings in Bloomington that approach this height, that I can figure out at this point, so if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, are all related to IU student housing. And I have heard you state in previous times, and then you also emphasized here, workforce housing, family housing, owner-occupied kind of models, and I, and that you don't have the intention of building student-focused housing in this region. And by student-focused housing, I mean when lease agreements are, are, you're renting a room with a bathroom, and then you have a shared common space. That's what I mean by student-focused, because that's like a student-focused design that's not really suitable for families. So I want to, I want you to talk about why you think there'll be non-student interest, and what the market, like what kind of market analysis have you done about non-student interest in living, you know, on the 10th story of an apartment complex? And so if you could address that point, and then also address whether at this time, because I know that you guys as a development group may or may not develop all of these things, you know, I'm assuming that you're not developing every single one, but do you have intention at this point in developing those big buildings in the MX and the MN?
So first of all, I would say, our, our table of uses does not allow student housing as it's defined in the code. So our allowed uses does not allow student housing as defined in the code. So you can't go build that type of product that we've seen built in other places on this site, regardless of how tall it is, because it's not an allowed use. So that's, number one, it's not allowed use. Number two, when you look at the housing study, it calls for newly constructed units, about 700 of them need to be built that are under $700 a month. The only way you can build product that's under $700 a month is to build small and dense. That's the only way to do it. You've got to spread those costs, that construction cost out, over a bunch of units that are small. And the only way to do that is to go up. When we've got a limit on our size of blocks, a PUD says how large a block is. So we can't build a whole bunch of long buildings, because a PUD in Bloomington has to have traditional residential blocks. So the way you get that density is to go up. Now, that's why we're not proposing to do it everywhere, but the, the way to get density is to go up, because we don't have any land to spread it out. So we think that's appropriate, and that's why we think there's the ability to do that. But to get to that height, you've got to use all the incentives. Double-dipping on the incentives, as it's been called, as we're doing here, is exactly what the city did in the Hopewell Project. In the Hopewell Project, they came along and did an overlay that said, you get to double-dip on the incentives, where the rest of the UDO, you can only use one or, one or the other incentives, there you get to do two. And again, it's, it's to get density and affordability at the same time, and that's the only way to do it. So does that help explain?
Yeah, so then like, so then the second part of that question, the last 30 seconds, is like, is your development group at this point planning on building those big buildings?
We would like to build some of them, but not all of them.
Okay, and, but your intention then, at least with your builds, is that there would be, I'll say, multiple rents, multiple places that would maybe be one-bedroom and be $700 a month or less?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's my time for now.
Councilmember Osari.
Maybe a question for everyone, and thank you so much for your time. I think it's very clear within the presentation, we've emphasized the fact that you've done so much work, both city staff and the petitioners, we're very grateful for that. Moving beyond just how we're sort of meeting the requirements in the UDO, meeting the comprehensive plan, thinking about, you know, addressing housing needs in the long term in this community, what are we doing here that is, and forgive the question, we don't have a lot of time, but that you would say is innovative? That, that's, you know, something that we're saying, hey, you know, we're really using this opportunity to do something cool and different, other than building a lot of houses?
I think what you have here is the opportunity to really plan out something that has density to solve a lot of problems or a lot of issues that the community has. Traffic in that area of town is not ideal, and the opportunity to extend roads that are in the transportation plan, to bring that connectivity to that proximity to the central business district, is unique, and that's something that is inventive, that we're not able to do in any other place. You can't add that many houses and do it. To bring a project that is 138 acres, that is already approved as a Duke energy project, never seen that before. To utilize a project that not only meets the 15% affordability across 138 acres, To utilize a project that not only meets the 15% affordability across 138 acres, but in the two largest, most dense areas takes that up to 20%, never been done before. A project that is committed to electric for this many homes, never been done before. So I think that's the stuff we bring to here. We just had a meeting today with CBU, it was over an hour long meeting, with CBU talking about how to approach stormwater and inventive new ways. And I think that's something that we're bringing, that we're able to do here. Because we have enough area to actually explore, how do we, how do we deal with those things on a more regional basis, as opposed to piecemealing them together? So I think that's what we bring that's new and inventive to this project. There isn't a new style of construction that we're going to do here.
Right, and so that might be my, just a follow on question, because we're doing 30,000 foot view here and we'll have time for more in-depth questions. But when you think about 50 years from now, 100 years from now, are we building with the intent that this could essentially be a historical preserved district in the future?
I surely would hope so, yes.
And, and what are we doing to, because there's a lot of concern around, you know, maintaining the character of Bloomington and think, right, that, that we're not just building houses for the sake of building houses. So how are we integrating this into the cultural art, you know, historical and so on, sort of fabric of this community?
I think that over the year of working with planning staff, when they kept pointing us back to the UDO, and when we have, I mean, where else in Bloomington have we built two miles of streets that have sidewalk, tree plot, dedicated bike lane, two-foot barrier, driving lane, driving lane, two-foot barrier, dedicated bike lane, tree plot, multi-youth path? We have never done that in Bloomington. We've talked about it, we've added it in places, never done that. Where have we built new subdivisions with alley access? We talk about it, but we haven't done it very much. This is something we're able to do, and we're not just doing it for a 20 lot subdivision. We're doing it for 138 acres.
Questions? Excuse me, council member Daly.
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for that, that very helpful explanation. It made this feel much more accessible, understanding it a bit better than reading the packet, so I appreciate that. Can we get an estimate on when we could expect the traffic impact analysis to be completed?
So the traffic impact analysis is completed. The addenda is completed. The city engineer then came back and said, could you do some sensitivity analysis at these specific intersections? In other words, Weemer Road is supposed to be realigned. That's already in the plan. So we did an analysis as it is today and with it realigned. The traffic engineer came back and said, well, can you do a sensitivity analysis as if it happened in year three as opposed in year five? And so that's what we're working on. It's supposed to be done this week. I wish it was done here today. My understanding from speaking with the engineer, it doesn't really change the recommendations. This light still needs to be addressed timing. This intersection still is going to be a roundabout or a lit or a stop sign. It may change whether that happens in year three or year four, but it's not changing it from do nothing to build an interstate. It's really just saying, when does that trigger happen? But Jackie can add to that.
Yeah, so I think the concern from the reviewers is that the documents that we do have, while fully fleshed out, they reference this other document that we don't have. And so being able to review it as a whole, and, you know, we hope it comes by the end of this week too. You know, we have, I mean, I have emails from, you know, middle of March saying it's going to come by the end of this week. Like, we just need it to happen, and we know that she's working hard on it, they're doing tons of other things. But in order for the city engineer to make a fully informed recommendation to you all or to, you know, be able to fully respond to the petitioner, saying like, I think we should prioritize these four things, he feels like he needs that document. So that's why we're saying if it doesn't come, then we think it should be up to him to make that decision about what's required, as opposed to having it be a negotiation that could bring in other concerns.
And, and while I don't want to negotiate a, a condition tonight, because I don't think it's appropriate, I think we could, could negotiate a condition that staff would be happy with if we don't have the, the one, two, three by that time.
Super, thank you. For your questions, council member Daly? Okay. Other council member questions? Council member Zulik.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions about like, you know, what we consider to be walkable, and that's part of like having access to a grocery store. And so when we talk about like, what is in the commercial space? To what extent have you considered like different food options? We do have several spaces in Bloomington that are in a food desert, and I just want to make sure that we're not sponsoring another one.
We work pretty hard with staff, and I think we've included all those kinds of uses, grocery store, other uses that are walkable, community uses. However, please take a look at it. If there's a use that you think we've not included, or if there's a use that you're saying, scratching your head about, please let us know. But we think we've included those. I mean, I'll let Jackie respond as well.
Yeah, I would say so in the, the way that it comes through in the district ordinance is that there's a use table. And so for each of the zoning designations that they've picked, they choose what use is to be in there. So I kind of focused on what the residential uses were and just briefly spoke about non-residential uses. But like supermarket, for example, isn't allowed use in the MN. The thing is, we can't, you know, mandate that one goes in there. I mean, that's, so they have done basically what they can regulation wise about leaving the door open for that. And beyond that, I don't know that anything else has been done.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Council member Ruff, do you have any questions? No?
No, I do not, thank you.
All right, I guess I'll take my turn then. So I, my questions are related to the environmental commission memo. The environmental commission had several concerns, and one of them focused on the area designated as PO, parks and open space, and that it, you know, won't be taken over by the city parks and rec and that those areas are actually going to be protected from development because they include sensitive environmental features. Could you speak to that, Ms. Scanlon?
Sure. Let me see. So, yes, we, we went to the environment, I went to the environmental commission and described the project to them, and the petitioners were there as well, and Mr. Councilperson Raula was there as well to just kind of give them an idea of what was going on. So this, we knew this was one of their concerns, and I've talked to them about it. But basically, I would say that while they're using the parks and open space as a designation base from the UDO, it's clearly not the same parks and open space. It isn't for public parks. And they have described that in the district ordinance of what this is intended to be. And that's why I was mentioning earlier that even though they do have allowed uses there, so I would say, you know, 98% of what they're designating as parks and open space will be in a conservation easement. They have picked those areas to be parks and open space because they are environmentally constrained and set them aside for that reason. And so when we do the plating, those areas that are called out in the UDO as requiring easement, which, which allows limited development, will be designated, and much of that is the PO area. Does that make sense? It doesn't look like I'm kidding.
Yeah, I noticed in the use table that parks are actually not allowed in the PO area.
So we've talked about this a ton, and every time I forget and then bring it up, and then they're like, remember, we talked about this? That the trailhead is actually going to be in the RH2 area, and so it is allowed in that district. But I mean, they are not intending to use the PO district as a developable area. They've left in some things. I mean, I suggested that they just take them out, so you could do that as well. They did leave in some of those, kind of like supportive accessory uses. They could explain to you why, but yes, parks is not allowed there. The areas will be very likely to be developed at all.
So parks defined in our UDO, is that city owned only?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Which they could propose their own definition, but they're not intending to use it in that way.
Okay, and there was, there were some questions about landscaping and buffer yards as well, that some of the regulations from the UDO don't seem to be applied in this PUD, in some of the areas?
Yes, so they are proposing no buffer yards, I believe, across the board. Let me briefly look.
And why is that?
Do you want to?
So we typically see buffer yards between a residential use and a commercial use. And we see that in those areas, as development takes place, we want the commercial to set back so far from the residential, and so we have a buffer yard requirement. This is a PUD. We know where all that's going to be. If you're buying a house next to Everest, you know what's going to be next to Everest. So we've, we believe that a buffer yard is not required there. Buffer yards are not required in a PUD when it's next to another PUD, because it's planned. We know what's happening there. You know where the buildings are going to be. So that's why we don't believe it's appropriate to come in here and say, there's a buffer yard. For instance, since our project is zone PUD, there is no buffer requirement, any step down requirement against the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Because that's the way the UDO is, so.
That's my time, so thank you for that. All right, well, now we will go to a public comment on this development petition. And it'll be three minutes per person. Could you make the announcement via Zoom, please, Mr. Lucas?
Look, joining via Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom to let us know. You can find the raise hand button in your control bar by clicking on the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate the raise hand feature, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way.
All right, and whoever would like to speak here in council chambers, this is your opportunity to step up and state your name, sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes. I think that mic is not working.
Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. I'm here to speak in support of adding more housing to our community. It's been well documented here and anecdotally and through public conversations, how much this is needed for the community. What I wanted to share this evening is what we've been seeing in our role. When we speak with employers that are here, they are increasingly seeing more of their people coming from outside of the community. Some of the largest employers report half of their people coming from outside of Monroe County. That is often due to affordability of housing, availability of housing. That has an impact on individual workers who have to drive further. They spend time, they spend money. It has an environmental impact, and it has an impact on local income tax revenues as well, and just quality of life all around. When we have hosted employers, they, that are looking at our community, they've actually asked us to show them available workforce housing and available housing for their employees. When we've heard the university and others talk about recruiting folks here, housing has come up again and again. Our colleague Clark Greiner, he recently attended the National Site Selector Guild Conference. Housing was on the list for factors that are considered in the community. So we really appreciate your consideration of this project and the ability to keep more people living in this great community and adding to that and planning for the future. So thank you so much for your consideration. Our letter is also in the packet if you'd like to see more details.
Next speaker here in chambers?
Madam President, members of the council. I dropped the letter off this morning, and I don't know if it was memorized and passed out to you, but if you had not seen it, I would ask that the gentleman I gave it to make sure you all have a copy. It will save a lot of time rather than my reading it to you. I'd like to point out a couple of things.
What's your name, sir?
I thought I did. My apologies, I'm John Scott. I have a hearing problem, so.
Thank you.
But density, what they're going to basically do on a quarter, and density is figured on a mile basis. So for Bloomington, in a mile, there's roughly 3,500 people per mile. On that 130 some odd acres, there's a quarter of a mile, they're going to put 8,000 plus people, which is tough. Second, 66% of the population of Bloomington are renters. They have been historically, it's more of a rental community than it is a homeowners community. I've heard a lot about affordable housing, all right? What's affordable housing? The national standard, as you have a standard of so much for your rent, 30%, the cost of a house based on your income should be three times your income. So if you make, you know, $100,000, you're talking $300,000 house. If you're making $50,000, you're talking a $150,000 house. They don't exist. The other issue basically is the traffic. It's a great report, but it doesn't tell me, while I'm figuring it out, how many cars a day are going to be using those roads. North Adams is the elementary school. If you go up to the elementary school at the time the buses are going, you can't get up and down Adams Street. It's totally blocked by buses. That's another issue. The building height, where is there an eight-story building in downtown here? There isn't. How many eight-story buildings are there in Bloomington? There's not too many. There's probably a half a dozen. So you're going to put an eight-story building on a hill. So that's just going to look like a sore thumb sticking up there. And the environmental impact, well, the environmental commission on the 19th of March came up with 14 regulatory issues that they were concerned about in four non-regulatory. So I don't know if you've ever seen that March 19 study, but I'd like to point out to you, if you approve this, you have changed the zoning, you have changed the character of the city of Bloomington, not for the better, for the worse. The developer, I agree, has a problem. He needs to cut it to about 3,000 units. That's more acceptable, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, first, Ted Frick.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Frick. Say your full name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. Technical difficulties?
Unmuting. We do have one other hand raised on Zoom at the moment, that's Jamie.
Okay, we can go to Jamie and then maybe come back to Mr. Frick later.
Hi, my name is Jamie Scholl, and unfortunately I haven't had time to read through the documentation, but I have been listening very closely to what's going on. Some things came to mind whenever I was listening to the presentation. Some of this has been mentioned before, like how many units are for homeownership? We like to talk about housing, but I'd like to see how many would be dedicated to that. To those ends, we could think about building a different style of home that is narrow and tall and closer together so that the lot is deep and there'd still be a yard, so children can play, gardens can be grown, people can relax. Another thing, it's always perplexed me is whenever we talk about the environment, is, is there a plan to relocate any of the current, current animal residents? We have a lot of animals here and some of it deer populations, so that doesn't seem to be considered in the, typically, and I'd like to bring that up. I've worked a long time and been very concerned, concerned not just with food security, but food sovereignty. That is very dependent upon land ownership. When you're talking about perennial agriculture, whether that's fruit trees, brambles, blueberry bushes, anything like that, there needs to be land tenureship, so a length of time on the land to plant and care for those things. Another point, has the Commission on Aging and Council for Community Accessibility been talked to? We have a population moving here that is also older, and they will have needs that I'm not hearing being addressed. Since we're creating a town within a city, is what it sounds like, do we have an outdoor space, like a piazza, for people to gather and socialize while supporting local businesses? And is there a plan for disasters such as tornadoes, especially if there is a very tall building or buildings? Is that being considered? And when we have a lot of taller buildings close by, that's going to create shade and no sunshine between some of these places, depending upon how wide the roads or walkways are between the buildings. And has bus stops been planned with the roadways? So, there could be some pull-off, and the roadways could be typically narrower, but with a pull-off for a bus, so it's not causing any kind of congestion. I understood that there's no natural gas going to be coming into these homes, and I did listen to one of the commission meetings where it was talked about that all of these buildings are being lead, but they will not have solar.
That's your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker here in council chambers.
Hi, I'm Randy Craw. I'm a resident on Weemer Road. And what? Yes. I'm a resident on Weemer Road, Randy Craw. And one of my concerns is you're putting a city in a city. You're going to lose a lot of green space, and it concerns me that the density of approximately 4,250 units is going to produce approximately 10,000 people in this area. The area really cannot handle too much more for the infrastructure for what you have. Between the 7th Fire Department, that's now being proposed, that's a lot of cost right there. Our jail system, I don't think people are going to be wanting to go to jail, but our jail is already overfull, and we know it's going to be adding more to this. The hospital is already at its limit. It really needs another wing. I've been experiencing multiple waits in this emergency room, just trying to get a bed, and they're already full. There's 20 people deep sometimes, just being boarded in the ER. And you're talking, once again, a whole nother city of people, 10,000. That's a lot that you're asking of this city. The infrastructure is not here for everything that you want to do. From the water system itself, Lake Monroe, that's another six-inch line you're going to have to bring up here, the sewer. You're asking to take on a lot of financial responsibilities by building another city here. Please plan accordingly to bring all the infrastructure that you need, the roads, et cetera. Everything needs to be planned out well in advance. But my big concern is you're losing a lot of green space. Please utilize this space well, maybe add more solar systems. I was so happy to hear that you wanted to do solar systems and wind. I think those are great things to go and do. Having the place be electric is great as well. Make it sustainable. Make this ability to carry on the name of Bloomington. You're about to lose part of your Haven of Blooms for how Bloomington was named. You are changing the structure and the character of Bloomington. This is a great place to grow up, raise your kids, have families. It's beautiful the way it is. 12-story building, oof, that's really kind of hard to fathom. You'll be blocking out the sunlight. I'll be looking across my field and go, "Oh, there goes my son." I won't see it till almost noon now. It's really hard to accept that you're going to allow this last green space and put a city over there. I know we need more housing, but when you go to do this, make it a community that people can work together. In large cities, people feel a lot more isolated. Habitat has been doing a great job of putting these homes together. Arbor Ridge is a nice community. It works well when people work together. Sometimes, this city is really not your best answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have more people on Zoom?
We'll try again with Ted Frick, who has.
Did that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. For some reason, my computer wouldn't let me unmute. I'm Ted Frick. I live on Weemer Road. I've written several letters to the Bloomington Plan Commission and also to the council, and I hope you've had a chance to read them. I'm not going to repeat most of the items there. I appreciate especially what the Plan Commission has done and the Planning Department, especially Jackie's work and the developer. They've really listened to a lot of the things that we've raised as issues, especially the issue regarding possible flooding due to the runoff from the development as well as potential traffic condition, congestion, rather, down the road when we get a lot more people living there, assuming this is approved. And so, the one thing I would like to add, I was a little concerned about the comment tonight, that we still don't have the rest of the traffic report in. I remember waiting on this since last summer. We got the original traffic report three days before the March 19 meeting on a Saturday for a Tuesday meeting, and we still don't have the rest of it, apparently. And I think that's the elephant in the room here, is the impact, the traffic analysis impact. If you have that many units and people in this area, it's going to affect a lot of things. I think the traffic analysis is actually done quite well, as far as I can tell. I'm not an expert in this particular area, but it looks like they've done their homework. And so, I would really support the council and the Planning Department to hold the developer, the petitioner, to get that in and get that clarified, because that is really, really important. If that's not adequately addressed, we're going to have a giant mess. So, that's basically what I wanted to say. Developments like this, especially if there are a lot of different developments going on at the same time within a city, it mushrooms or it impacts each other, and you don't see that coming until it hits you. And we've seen that happen many times in Bloomington. I've lived here nearly 50 years. And when you've got all of this development going on, you get lots of traffic congestion that nobody saw coming, and then when it's here, everybody's unhappy until it gets fixed. And sometimes, that's hard to do in a short period of time. So, please, please, get that traffic analysis agreement, whatever that is, as part of this vote, if you're going to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person here in council chambers.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to express our full support for the Summit District Plan PUD proposal. Chamber believes this development aligns with our vision for a vibrant, thriving community and contributes significantly to Bloomington's economic growth and much-needed housing stock. I want to echo some of our colleague at the BEDC, Ms. Pearl's comments. Our letter is also in there. But I don't think we've sort of talked about that this is smart growth. By incorporating essential amenities like green spaces, walkable areas, commercial space, the project fosters a livable and sustainable community that lines with Bloomington's values. This includes using 38% of the land dedicated to open space. I have come away impressed with the Sullivan Development's openness and willingness to hear out the neighbors' concerns and make necessary modifications. When I met with Mr. Venzel eight, nine months ago, this project has evolved over time. I've been impressed, the collaboration with many city departments. He's got the patience of a saint. And we have to remember about developers. They don't make any money until they sell that first piece of land, that plot of land. I saw a lot of names up there, and I assume those people are getting paid. So, I think we need to keep that in mind. And now, if we put on my resident hat, which kind of blurs with my chamber hat at times, I am a Sunny Slope resident, and I came before the Plan Commission, I think it was eight years ago, against the Echo Park Urban Forest Living multifamily. And I was wrong. It has not changed the character of our neighborhood. In fact, I'd probably say it's improved it slightly. The engineering staff did a wonderful job on the egress regress, and really, there hasn't been any of the concerns that I thought might be. And then, one of the other things I want to say, as a bloomerang for the past 12 years, I had the starter home for now 12 years, and I'm looking to upgrade that home. I don't want to live outside of the city limits, but there is a limited stock. And, you know, it's important that the ROI study that it entails all facets, the need for all facets of housing, multifamily, single-family condo, townhomes. I'm hoping we can have some more of those townhomes, those condos, so that people who are, you know, empty nesters can go down to those housing, and I can move into their house. I mean, these are just the things we need to sort of evolve with time to make sure that we are meeting this area and the city's needs for housing. We've lost good employees here at the city, my friends, because they could not find housing to buy. I thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there other comments on Zoom?
Next on Zoom is Wendy.
Okay. Wendy, please state your full name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Wendy Brish. I haven't, I've not about this project, not for a long time. I think probably most people in Bloomington don't know about it. But I am somewhat concerned that the kind of housing that we actually need in Bloomington is being addressed. I know that people do want to be able to buy. I think that's just such an important thing. And so many, so many things, even duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes and condo-type developments have all been rented instead of. And I was really surprised by a lot of that. And, you know, I would definitely, you know, encourage you to just do that research into if this is the kind of housing that Bloomington needs. And also, if, you know, what is considered affordable? And if that, you know, and what for a family, for, and if a single-bedroom unit is being rented for $700, how big is that unit? Can that, is that livable? I'm concerned that a 12-story building and that these, that this whole thing is livable, not just for the people in the homes, which I'm assuming will be probably pretty expensive to buy. And those are the only ones that I really have any reason to think will be owner-occupied. But, you know, will these be built to sell? Will they be built to buy? Who will buy them? Will they rent them? I'm just, I just am concerned that this is such a huge bunch of housing and that it will be not, that it will be all livable for the people in the 12-story buildings as well as the homes, that it will be humane, that it will be sustainable as far as what the kind of, the kind of life we want people to have in Bloomington. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next person here in council chambers.
Hi, my name is Rachel Noble. I am a Weemer Road resident. And I agree with a lot of the comments of other commenters. I thank Jackie and the developers for listening to our concerns. But my, what I want to address is to the city in general. I bought my house in 1992. I was not in a floodplain. Now, I'm in a floodplain, which is being updated, so almost half my house is in the floodplain. The flooding started with the building of the Twin Lakes softball field. And you have a runoff little lake that's now become the lake, which filled with sediment from the ball fields. That thing is so full and never cleaned from the city's ballpark, and that potentially floods my property, and it has three times now since I've owned the property. And all I ask is the city in okaying this, understand that you have a responsibility, which has never been addressed since Twin Lakes. There's a long documented history of the problem. And now, you're doing development and changing a floodplain on the other side. And my understanding is several developers will be developing parts of this program. And I need to know that the city is going to monitor that and do something, because what happens if you clog it up, which it already is on my side, on Weemer, and now you clog it up on the other side? My property is behind the creek, and I'm the one that's going to be flooded. So, take that seriously, that it's not just Weemer Road, it's individuals and homes. And for the greater good of Bloomington, are you really willing to sacrifice my house? I do remember when the Twin Lakes thing happened, and the first flooding happened in '93, I believe it was, that it was discussed by the city of buying my house, because they caused the problem. And then, they did the bluff. Well, why should we have to do that? You're not, you're county, you're not city. So, we have the same problem going again. So, that's one thing. And the second thing is, everyone's talking about they're going to develop Adams, but everybody right now sees Weemer as the road. There's clear signs on both sides of Weemer, "No trucks allowed." Yet, I saw an oil tanker go down our street just last week. There's trucks all the time. Weemer cannot handle this kind of traffic, and it's going to get it. The apartments, Hunters, I feel so bad for them, because they clearly say, "This is not open for residential." Everybody cuts through the Hunter Apartments to get to a stoplight. You cannot get out of Weemer either direction. Second Street, if you hit that at 5:00, it'll take you a half hour to get to Weemer Road. You just can't move. So, Weemer has to be addressed, not just Adams, before this happens. So, those are my two concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom?
Yes, next on Zoom is Greg Alexander.
Hello. Thanks. Yeah, my name is Greg Alexander. Obviously, we need a lot more housing. Our housing has to grow even faster than our population, or the prices simply can't come down. There are so many people who live far away who would rather live in the city limits. Already, we have that demand. And we need housing in places like this that haven't already been built, so that we aren't displacing existing housing. And we need to give the developer a lot of flexibility, so they can negotiate with their financing and actually make it work and get it built. But the thing that's most important to me, actually, is that this corner of the city needs to be built out. It's actually pretty close to downtown. With the B-line and the upcoming RCA power line trail, it's actually going to be meaningfully connected to downtown and campus. But right now, it feels like it's on the other side of the moon. You go down there, and the street grid isn't connected. There aren't sidewalks. The streets look like country roads. Even though it's so close to the city, it's developed as if it was sprawl. It doesn't have the necessary tax base to support meaningful investment in infrastructure. This project will develop new infrastructure on its own, and then its residents will pay taxes, which will help maintain and further develop that infrastructure. This is how infrastructure is built. If this project doesn't happen, this area will remain isolated. We need to integrate these existing neighborhoods into the city, and filling in this gap is the most realistic way to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment here in council chambers.
My name is Melvin Williams. I'm from Arbor Ridge. You talked about pollution. If you're going to put 4,000 cars out there after the whole project's done, or 10,000 cars, is that not pollution? And that's in my neighborhood, all confined. Another thing is, is that I would like to invite all of you, any of you, to come out there and look at what you're looking at and see exactly how it's going to lay out. I'm the second unit on the right as you go in. And I don't want an apartment house in my backyard. And it would be about 100, maybe to 150 feet, an eight-story, four-story, or whatever. And every morning when I would get up, open my blinds, you've got 500 eyes that could be looking right in your, right in your living room because of the high-rise that's going, that would be built there. Another thing, just like they was talking about Weemer Road. If you're going to let the developer build that Sudbury Road, that's great. But you need to do Weemer Road the same time that you're building that one too, because everybody's not going to go to Adams Street. What are you going to do if you want to go west? You'll go down to Weemer Road, and you got to get off of Weemer Road at Second Street or Tap Road. You can't get any heavy equipment in there anyhow until he gets that road built, because you can't, there's a bridge on the south side of Weemer, and there's Second Street on the other side, just like the lady said. You go either to Tap Road or you go to Second Street. At rush hour time, you can't get out. And, you know, everybody now is starting to come in from Tap Road, because at least they can, they can get a, they have a chance to getting out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another comment via Zoom?
Yes, next is Stacy Schonk.
All right. Stacy, please give us your full name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, can anyone hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. I'm actually Steven Shaw, I'm Stacy's husband.
Okay, go ahead.
We're logged on to her computer. I mean, I'm a resident, we're residents on Weemer Road and pretty much everybody said it all and I just wanted to chime in and make sure my voice was heard for a moment. And, you know, the proposed up-to-12-story building going on top of a hill, basically directly across the street, which effectively will be a sunblocker, is a little discouraging and being supportive of the project. Because I have actually nothing against development, but that seems a little egregious. Somebody said something when the council said something about food desert. There's absolutely nothing around here. The only place to eat is a gas station. Eddie hadn't tried to travel on foot to anything. It's basically taking your life in the hands of traffic. There's no way to get anywhere. So there's a lot of development that has to happen in that regard because if you're going to create a city within a city, something has to support that city. Anyhow, I don't want to take up any more time. Everybody wants to go home. Everybody have a great night. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Next speaker here in council chambers?
Appreciate you guys taking the time to look through everything and do what's going on. I know Travis and those guys have used a lot of time. There's been a lot of consideration to take. Oh, Randy Cassidy, I apologize. Yeah. For the past 23 years, I've been the individual that's been gracious or had the privilege to actually care to take Lori Mill for its timeframe. So when we look at this property that I'm looking at, I have a couple things concerned: height, bulk, density, numbers. We all know we need housing. We know that it's going to occur in some fashion on this project. The question we always has, height, bulk, density, and the amount that keeps, as I said, maintains the character of our community. The two things I have questions in regards to, which I'm sure is being addressed in the engineering aspect, is, one, the connectivity that is going to go into this project, the south, which we need traffic issues, that goes into the Breaking A Way, which is a private drive at this present moment. The Ridge Group, which I think was part of this, had put that in. But I want to make sure, if we're looking at traffic connectivity, that we take that into consideration so that it becomes either part of the public or we know what needs to be addressed at the particular time so we can get to Tap Road. Also, the issue that deals with, as we know, Adams Street will be a wonderful connection and it's something that's needed to be done for a long time. The connectivity that we look at down there in regards to Weemer Road, from a historical standpoint, the city at one point has bought a building where Weemer comes on the Second Street. That was one of the stoppers of the previous PUD for having a stoplight there when Harvey Sudbury was involved. That road connectivity through is extremely important and I'm not sure how we're able to get that, to have our stoplight connectivity that will come in, take out the corner of Weemer and be able to get us into Tap Road or into Second Street effectively. Also, the other thing, that's a road connectivity. It's something that they've planned well for Adams Street and such, but that connectivity to Weemer and how we do that. The other aspect we look at, and I know Travis will be looking at this, is from innovative ways that we do water containment because not only do we have the issue of what kind of water is coming down, it's been referenced to Twin Lakes, the lower area, we also have to take into consideration as we go through what additional water runoff flooding will occur farther down into the other residences that are already there. So I appreciate your concern and I look forward to hearing everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments via Zoom?
No, not that I see.
Do we have anybody else in council chambers who would like to comment? All right, well then, I think we're done with this portion of the agenda. And keep in mind, we will revisit this on May 1st and we will have, you know, time for questions, public comment, and council comment at that time. We will also consider any reasonable conditions that any council members would like to bring forward to attach to this petition. And I encourage my colleagues to work with city council staff and with planning staff on those as soon as possible. Now, we don't have anything for first readings, so I'll need to pull up my agenda to see where we are here. Now is a period of additional public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if anybody has any additional items, you will have up to three minutes each. Welcome.
I'm back. So I am here to actually share something that council members, you have in front of you. This is a new resource that the BEDC launched. For those of the public who aren't familiar, we're committed to growing quality jobs across the community, diversifying our employment base, and increasing wages. There are two things we wanted to share with the public. One, we published an article in the Herald Times this past week about the hundreds of jobs that are currently open in our community. There's a lot of great opportunity for new grads, for people who are trying to find better jobs and move up. So please, I would ask that you share this with your constituents and members of the public, look that up and share it with people who you know who might be looking. In addition, this guidebook is something that the BEDC created with partners across the community as a resource following the recent Catalent layoffs. But this booklet is actually something that can be used for anybody going through an employment transition. It includes everything from emergency resources, if people need financial, emotional, and other support. Work one, local opportunities. The article that I mentioned is on page 15 with the tab. Opportunities to upskill, funding, as well as tips for hitting the job market. This is available at BloomingtonEDC.com under the news section of our website. And this is a living document. So if anyone sees that something's missing, please let us know because we would love to continue to update it and share it with the community. Thank you for sharing this with others.
Thank you. Any other member of the public like to give a comment on items not on the agenda? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Or Mr. Lucas, do you want to issue the invitation?
Not that I see. If there are folks on Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand or send a chat to the host.
Good evening, Madam President, council, distinguished staff. Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Just a quick plug, you'll be getting an invite from us on our first annual Valor Awards May 8th at the Monroe County Convention Center. This is a luncheon. We'll be honoring the five police departments within the community, three fire departments, and of course Dispatch, which you share with the county. It's a great honor to be honoring some Dispatch people whose job I don't think gets enough recognition, but that is again, May 8th. We will be sending you an invite for that, but one of our two priorities is housing that I spoke to earlier and now public safety. So it's important to hit those two areas and this is a good chance to sort of give back on an area where we are a little bit short-staffed as far as policing goes. And I think having these sort of events gives a clear indication that we value their service to the community. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
Anybody else in council chambers? I don't think so. All right. Now we have some reminders about council schedule. Before we move to those, I would make a motion to schedule a council work session on April 30th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on the topic of how best to handle public comment at city council meetings. And I think, do we need a vote on that? Mr. Lucas? Okay. All right. Is there any questions or comments before we move to a vote on scheduling the work session?
Do you need a quorum for the work session?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, actually.
We need to vote on it if, can you just say we're going to meet and meet? I'm not trying to stop us from voting, I'm just generally curious.
Our annual schedule lays out the meetings of the council. That can be amended at any time by majority of the council. Council president is authorized to hold special sessions, to call special sessions. I don't think that's what this is. So my suggestion is to schedule additional meetings other than what's on our schedule if they're not special sessions by a vote of the council. We have passed an ordinance years ago now that specifically mentions a quorum is not necessary for work sessions to proceed. Of course, work sessions aren't meant to allow the council to take final action. Without a quorum, you would not be able to take final action at all, so.
All right. If there are any other questions? If not, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Vasari?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, are there some other reminders about our schedule?
Yes, just a couple of upcoming meetings I wanted to note for folks. Tomorrow, the Special Committee on Council Processes will meet at 6:00 p.m. The Jack Hopkins Committee will meet next Tuesday at 5:30 p.m. here in council chambers for agency presentations. And next Wednesday, instead of a council regular session, you all have a scheduled budget advance meeting that will be in the Allison Conference Room next Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. So just wanted to offer those as reminders.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
We just talk a little bit about what that budget advance is, just like for people to be prepared or like bring, is this where we are talking about what we want to see in a budget?
I think so, but also what we want to see in a budget process. Both process and substance of, I think, will be topics for discussion.
Does it end at a certain time?
I don't know. I don't think we set an end time for the council budget advance.
No, although there may be a practical end time if the mayor, controller aren't able to meet indefinitely. I can tell, give the new folks, newer council members, a bit of history on what budget advance meetings have been. That doesn't mean that's what this one must be or will only include, but in the past, these have served as an opportunity for the mayor and the city controller to provide information to the council on what they know as far as the city revenues expected for next year, broadly what they are looking at for the budget that will come to you all later this fall, priorities that they'll be highlighting, and any notable budget-related matters. The last couple of years, that's included large amounts of one-time funding that the city has received through ARPA or other federal sources. It's also been an opportunity for council members and the clerk's office to talk about your budget priorities and expectations for departments in the upcoming year. So if you want to come prepared to speak about that, I think that's a good idea. I know Council President Piedmont Smith and the mayor have been talking about, given that this is a new administration and several new council members are on council this year, this might be a chance to talk about the budget process itself and how the budget is brought to you all to make sure that this works for the council and for the mayor and our new controller. And so I would be prepared to talk about those topics as well. And the mayor may have some thoughts on structuring the meeting that we can share this Friday when the packet goes out. I expect some materials will go out by the end of the week.
Thank you. Any other final utterances before we adjourn? All right, well, thank you all and we are adjourned.